Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for October 3rd, 2013. The first item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for September 19th and 26th.
Move approval of the September 19th minutes?
Second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll move that we approve the September 26th minutes.
And I'll abstain.
Motion made? Yeah, the motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number three on the agenda is to confirm the future meeting date, so we're going to meet on the 17th. And that meeting is at the Senior Center.
No, 23rd.
The 23rd is at the Senior Center. 17th is here. And the October 28th meeting is at the Senior Center, and that's to discuss the DOR recommendations.
Yeah, the 23rd meeting.
We have 28 down here.
28 is the Fall Town Meeting.
Future, okay, so we have the October 17th, we have the 23rd, and we have the 28th.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are fine with me.
We probably already have a pretty full agenda for the 17th, but I do think we should add, if we haven't already added it to the agenda, we should discuss probably the articles for the Fall Town Meeting and the DOR report in advance of the next two meetings.
At the 17th meeting?
Yes.
That's a good idea, yeah.
As long as we're talking about agendas, something I was thinking about, something that's kind of fallen off our agendas, and it may be because of open meeting law problems, but one is the report of the Town Administrator and report of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. We used to have those on as kind of regular...
Yeah, I had to go a while ago, too.
Town Administrator reports, definitely, yeah.
Is it because of the open meeting law changes that it was taken on?
I don't know why. But we have no mechanism right now to report out things that we might have done during the week.
Actually, and you know...
It's not a discussion.
That's a good point, Tom.
It's not deliberation, it's just, here's what we did during the week.
The core meetings we have on Wednesday, it's something that the Chairman could report on.
Yeah, you've got to be a little careful, obviously, you're not talking about things that should be executive session material, but, yeah.
You also have to list everything on the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're not deliberating, all we're doing is just reporting out. I don't see why we can't do that.
Yeah, I think we should check on that, because that's something I've been thinking about, too. For instance, I attended the Town Government Study Committee's meeting last night, and they had some good ideas about the DOR report.
Right, we couldn't deliberate on anything.
We couldn't deliberate on it, but we could at least report on some of these things.
I don't see why we can't do that.
Okay, I'll talk with Council.
So you're saying Town Administrators and the Chairman of the Board?
Yeah, yeah, if it's Town Administrators or anything that you want to, I mean, most of the stuff we already know about anyways, but if it's something that, you know, should kind of get out to the general public as well, or if it's projects that we've given the Town Administrator to do, and just give us an update on where those projects stand, that kind of thing.
I know that the Chairman of the School Committee does it every meeting.
And I don't know if the School Committee still has it, but they used to have a Superintendent report, too.
Well, they have the Superintendent and the Chairman of the School Committee.
Yeah, I think that would be good, if we could reinstate that. We might also want to consider the possibility of going to weekly meetings or three meetings a month, I, we talked about that a few meetings ago.
Yeah.
I know that depends on everybody's work schedules, but we have a pretty full agenda tonight, because maybe, yeah, we might be able to shorten some of these meetings and have more frequent meetings.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Especially coming into budget season in the winter.
Sure.
Okay, so just to recap, we have October 17th, the 23rd, which is at the Senior Center, and then October 28th is for the Fall Town Meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. Good? All right, number four on the agenda is Citizen Speak. Anyone here for Citizen Speak other than the Temple at present? We'll take the Temple afterwards. Okay? Come on up. Hello?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Flightman, co-chair of MCAAI, Milton Citizens Against Aviation Impact, and I was asked to give a quick update of what we've been doing. The Committee's been doing a lot of work, and we got all the documents from the FAA for filing the Notice of Appeal, and we went through them rather quickly, we need to go through them a lot slower, but we found something very, very interesting. When they delayed implementing 33 because they extended the comment period, what they did, they snuck a fast one in. They took RNAV for runway 27, and they implemented the RNAV. They didn't have an environmental assessment, they didn't have any notices, they used what they called a categorical exclusion, because they felt that it would be overflying the exact same area. When that change was implemented, that's when everybody started hearing much more noise in March. So in fact, the biggest change really is to 27. And if we can prove that the flight path, before they implemented the RNAV and the flight path now, is a lot different, then we definitely have a case for that. But that was something they never told anybody about, and they probably should have. And the other thing I wanted to report was Congressman Lynch was supposed to have met with the FAA on Monday, however, the FAA is closed. But we met with his Chief of Staff last Friday and went through all of the issues that we want him to discuss with the FAA on our behalf. The FAA won't meet with us because of the Notice of Appeal, but he was going to be our voice, and I believe that Brian Joyce and Walter Timmeltie were going to go to that meeting as well, so we're waiting for that to be rescheduled. And I'm also trying to set up a forum in town for Representative Capellano to be at, because he's also on the Department of Transportation, and he works very closely with the FAA, and I wanted to get him here for a question and answer forum. But I haven't heard back from his office either. Brian is working with me on that. And I'm sure everybody saw the letter that Brian wrote to the FAA on our behalf, which was very, very good. So I think we're making some progress, not a lot, not quickly, but some progress. And we'll just keep updated and keep plugging along. And if anybody wants to join our committee, we do need help, we need help Sunday, we have a table at Celebrate Milton, and we need someone to help me in the table for part of the afternoon, and I did post that on our Facebook page. But if anybody wants to help us with the table, they can email us at nomoreplanes123@yahoo.com. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Cheryl. Anyone else for Citizen Speak? Hi, Stephen.
Hi, thank you. Steve Frisetti, 170 Granite Ave, Precinct 7. I don't know if this is the right form or not, but I'd like to request a crosswalk added at the end of Hope Ave where it crosses Squanton Street. And it's right, if you're coming from Quincy, there's a corner right there, so it's sometimes hard to see traffic coming, and they come around the corner pretty fast. I think if we put a crosswalk in there, it would kind of, at least make me feel a little more comfortable crossing over.
Okay, I might, Mr. Chair. And it's no problem, tell us about it here. The proper mechanism would be to go through Traffic Commission or something like that, they meet quarterly, and they would have to weigh in on it, and then, after they have their public meeting presented to us, if they believe it.
Okay, and that would be posted on the Town Clerk website when they're going to...
The Police Chief is the Chair of the Traffic Commission, so you could call his office, and the Assistant over there would give you the schedule.
Okay. And the other issue I had, I noticed there was a water leak on Bosa's Lane, right where it crosses over Cant Nav. It's coming right out of the little valve thing, and I called and reported it last Friday.
To whom? To the DPW?
Yeah, I called the DPW number and followed the menu system, and I thought I had the right place. I don't know if I actually got to the right place or not, but I, there was a woman there that said she'd pass it along, but it's still, it was still leaking today. So, maybe some, you could address the DPW.
Emory, you'll call Joe Lynch tomorrow?
Yes, I will.
We'll get that reported in the morning.
I can tell you that the Traffic Commission's next meeting is October 22nd at 10:00 a.m. at the police station.
Okay.
Okay?
It's a public meeting, you can just show up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else for Citizen Speak? If there's anybody for the Temple for Citizen Speak, you can, okay, just for Citizen Speak.
Not the Temple?
If you want to speak about the Temple, yep.
Come up to you.
Yep.
My name's Bill Sutton, I've been a resident of Lodge Street. I lived on 25 Lodge Street for 35 years. And I know before we moved in, there was a big issue of traffic on that street, so terrific an issue because of the church, St. Elizabeth's Church, that they had to make it a one-way. And that stopped a lot of the traffic. This proposed temple, I understand Mr. Gordon has been a long-term, good-standing member of this community, but the impact it will have, we feel, is members of Lodge Street, especially for safety and traffic of the children, I think there's over 20 children on that street. They'll have to go down, it'll impact, I believe, 22 or 23 houses on the street. There's a small opening, 37 feet, to get in and out of there. There's two lodge openings, 100-foot wide, off of Gun Hill Street, that seem to be much more appropriate.
How wide did you say it was, on Lodge?
Two openings of 100 feet off Gun Hill.
No, on Lodge?
37 feet, I believe. That's what the plot plan shows, town plot plan. So we feel the impact of probably daily traffic there, I don't know what they're saying, first of all, but I know there'll be things, daycare, and studies, religious studies, and Saturday services, et cetera, and other things that may go on, as well as the construction lodge trucks, concrete trucks, 18-wheelers going up and down that street, and a very small street, I believe it's only 22, 24 feet wide, is going to have a devastating impact on the street for the safety of the children, certainly for the residents, and, you know, we feel it may have an impact on the value of the property as well. It just seems very inappropriate and unnecessary to do that in a little tiny neighborhood with their modest houses with 60-foot frontages. When there's openings, one of those openings on Gun Hill will affect one house, that's it, one house on Lodge Street, one simple house. It'll affect the entire street and the entire neighborhood here. It just doesn't seem appropriate or necessary to do that to this neighborhood, and I think I can speak for everyone, we are really opposed to it for those reasons. The safety and the traffic is not appropriate for that street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Citizen Speak?
Hi, folks, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vincent Stankato, I'm a 25-year resident of Lodge Street, raised two children on Lodge Street, products of the Milton school systems. I'm going to just repeat a little bit about what Billy said. The only difference being is I'm also a 30-year member of the law enforcement community in the city of Boston. I work around construction and construction vehicles all the time, okay? That 37-foot-wide egress onto Lodge Street that Mr. Sutton mentioned means that when those trucks, 18-wheel trucks, I assume, are going to be coming out of there fully loaded, 80,000 pounds they weigh when they're fully loaded with stone and dirt, sooner or later, that type of construction material is going to have to come out, steel, stone, everything is going to have to go in to build a temple. Those vehicles, when they take that turn onto, from a 22 or 20-foot wide street, exiting, they're blind, they're blind, they can't see what's on their right. And we've got 20 young kids on the street in these houses, all right? Kids don't know the difference. If there's a vehicle, this is daytime activity we're talking about, if there's a car parked on the street and a truck is rolling down, the street is now narrowed to 16 feet, 6-foot wide vehicle, 22, 24-foot wide road. It's just going to create such a hazard for these children going down, playing on this street, riding bikes, living their daily lives. And this is going to be in addition to the daily traffic that we have on the street as a result of the cut-through that it's become. The Traffic and Parking Department was nice enough today to implement the recorders to study how much traffic is going on on the road. I believe those recorders are going to be in place for a week. It'll give us a chance, it'll give the Traffic Department a chance to see what's going on. There is already a restriction on the road. And basically, I thought maybe we could ask the Selectmen here to consider what you've done down at Waldeck and Reservation Road, which is to shut the road down between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 p.m., residents only, no through traffic. I know, I know it may not be your call, it's something that the Traffic Department has to hear about, it's a tack that we hope to take in an effort to stop what's going on as far as traffic is concerned in the road. The construction of the temple is a whole nother story with the vehicles coming in and out, as they bring in material and bring out material to put that temple together. And as Mr. Sutton said, there are 200-foot-wide entrances on which a road could be constructed to bring traffic into and out of the temple. Across the street, there are no houses, there is a cemetery and the cemetery property. Why traffic has to be allowed, or construction vehicles, or additional traffic has to be allowed on Lodge Street, seems a bit dangerous at this time with the number of kids. When my children were there, we raised about 15, 20 kids on the road. Right now, it's turned over, it's all young couples that you see before you here today. Most of these couples have two or three children on the street. And I just hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you, Vincent. Anyone else for...
How you doing? I'm Brian Walsh, I live at 35 Lodge Street, and just to reiterate a different point from what Vinnie said, I have an 18-month-old and one on the way, and the concern, it's not the temple itself, we respect everyone's wishes, you know, from a religious standpoint, but when, the concerns, we had a community town meeting, or community meeting with Mr. Gordon the other day, and from what I heard, and I could be wrong from what you had said, Mr. Gordon, about, the concerns on Gun Hill were the two egresses, one has a problem with drainage, and the other is very steep. And you can hire, they can hire a civil engineer to do the grading on the steepness to fix that, so it wouldn't be an issue. And the drainage, the drainage on Maitland and Lodge Street, if there's a drainage issue down there, when it rains an inch, if there's shuttle buses coming in to take people, they're not, they can't, the water rises like this on Maitland. And the other issue, they talked about, they are reiterating that there's not going to be much traffic, and, but one of the things that Mr. Gordon said, the concern about where it is, the steep egress, is that it would potentially impact Pleasant Street, but if there's not going to be as much traffic as they're saying, then it shouldn't be an issue. So I look at a potential solution on Gun Hill, given the traffic issues that we're all talking about with the children, is hiring a civil engineering firm to go in and redesign the grading of the street so you can fix it so it's not as steep, and there's not going to be much traffic, because there's only going to be 30 or 40 spaces. So it won't impact Pleasant Street on days of service. So just ask you to keep that into consideration.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Anyone else for Citizen Speak? Hello?
Hi, my name is Chris Stone, I live at 36 Lodge Street. I live there with my wife and our three children, and we've lived there for about three years, a little over three years. I'm here tonight with everyone else in opposition to this use, to this land use to allowing an access road through Lodge Street to this temple. We have a signed petition of over 40 signatures of families in the street voicing our strong and united opposition against this, and we also have just some faces to this, pictures of some of the community events that we have done, that will, and these kids will be very impacted by what is being proposed by the members of this temple. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have copies for everybody, when I put together. Good evening, my name is Aileen Kenny, I live at 17 Lodge Street with my husband Michael and our two sons, John, who is two and a half, and Matthew, who is eight weeks old. We moved to Milton two years ago. We selected Lodge Street because it is a nice residential neighborhood with a lot of the other young families. The Lodge and Maitland Street neighborhood is densely populated with many young children and families that continue to grow. There is a wonderful sense of community in the neighborhood. The elderly are cared for by neighbors, and when a new baby is born, neighbors bring meals to help out. On any given day, you will find kids climbing in trees and riding their bikes. While I strongly support religious diversity and feel that as a community, we benefit from providing all faiths with a comfortable and appropriate place to worship, I stand with the members of my neighborhood in opposition to the use of Lodge Street as primary access to the proposed Temple Shalom. My primary concern is the safety of our children. We are concerned about increased traffic on roads that were not designed for anything more than residential use. Lodge Street has documented traffic issues. We have been working with the Traffic Commission to address the amount of cut-through traffic we receive during the evening commute. It is not abnormal for a steady flow of cars to travel at excessive speed down the street and for there to be six to eight cars backed up as commuters attempt to avoid traffic on Pleasant Street by cutting down Lodge Street to take a left onto Randolph Ave. We simply cannot handle any more traffic. We are also concerned about the frontage of the lot where Temple Shalom proposes to install their access. It is, the width of it is debatable, I'll just say it's less than 60 feet, I got a number, a different number from the Planning Department the other day. This limited frontage is insufficient to allow safe entrance and exit and does not conform with the Milton zoning bylaws. Once buffer vegetation and sidewalks are installed, there will be even less space for the actual road. Proposing to install the primary access road to a religious facility on a residential lot with frontage of this limited size is irresponsible development and will create dangerous conditions for pedestrians on adjacent sidewalks, motorists traveling on Lodge and Maitland Streets, as well as vehicles entering and exiting the temple. In addition, Temple representatives have verbally notified residents that they do not propose to install one parking spot for every four seats in the temple as required under the Milton zoning bylaws. Instead, they propose to use off-site parking and shuttle the members of the congregation to the temple. This concept is completely absurd. First, Lodge and Maitland Streets cannot handle any type of buses. In addition, although I trust that the temple will try to enforce the use of the shuttle bus system, it's simply not realistic to think that everyone will use it. They will park on Lodge and Maitland Streets. The use of shuttle buses to mitigate insufficient parking will result in the creation of unsafe and dangerous conditions on the access road and on the adjacent streets and sidewalks. Finally, I fully understand that since this is a religious facility, there are some exemptions from local zoning under a Massachusetts general law commonly referred to as the Dover Amendment. This week, I visited the Planning Department to discuss the process for the approval of the temple and access road at the town level. I was told that because of the Dover Amendment, zoning is not applicable, and the only permit that will be required is a building permit that will be limited in the scope of its review to the physical building and parking only and will not include review of the access road. I was told that the review of traffic associated with the construction and operation of the facility will be at the discretion of the building official. The Dover Amendment does allow for reasonable regulation of certain aspects of this project. In order to protect the safety of your citizens, the Town of Milton must review the entire site, including the safety and traffic associated with the proposed access road. Tonight, I am asking you, our elected officials, to support the Lodge Street community by taking the following steps. First, please drive down Lodge Street and sit there for some time, and look at the limited width of the entrance to the proposed access road. Imagine that you live on this street with your two-and-a-half-year-old and your eight-week-old sons, and then imagine a steady flow of dump trucks and 18-wheelers delivering grading and other construction equipment, taking the turn onto that access road. Imagine that several deliveries arrive at once, and there are two to three heavy vehicles idling along the narrow street. Imagine these oversized vehicles taking the turn off of Pleasant Street onto Lodge Street. They will not be able to do it safely without taking a complex turn that will take up both lanes of Pleasant Street, another huge safety issue that affects the entire town, not just Lodge Street and Maitland Street. Imagine a Friday evening when we are burdened with a steady stream of commuter traffic and add the traffic into and out of the temple, as well as shuttle buses. Imagine the vehicles of members of the congregation parked along both sides of the road, restricting pedestrian and driver visibility. Think about whether all of these elements can coexist safely while our children are learning to ride their bikes on the sidewalk or playing in someone's front lawn. It will become obvious to you that Lodge Street is simply not a safe place to access this facility, and you must support our community in this opposition. Second, please conduct a legal review of the applicability of the Dover Amendment to the full scope of this development and share it with our community. If a review has already been completed, please share it with us. Third, please require that the building official refer the application for Temple Shalom to the Traffic Board. Also require that Temple Shalom conduct a traffic impact analysis for both the construction and operation of the proposed temple. The scope of the analysis should include an evaluation of the impact of both construction and operation of the temple on Lodge Street, Maitland Street, and Pleasant Street. Thank you for your time and attention, and we trust you'll take our concern seriously.
Hello?
Hi, my name is Julia Green, and I live at 16 Lodge Street. My family and I recently purchased our dream home on Lodge Street last June. I'm a stay-at-home mom, and we are relying on one income. We invested our life savings into this house, and we have made many sacrifices to save it for several years, and we looked at property for several years. The quiet, the privacy, the wildlife, and even the turkeys, but especially the open land behind our property appealed to us. We knew this would be an ideal neighborhood for my nine-year-old daughter, who's sitting here, my name is Bridgette, with 20 children living on the street. She has already made friends and plays on the street like when I was a young child growing up. Presently, there is a lot of traffic on our surrounding streets, especially on Randolph Ave. This proposed development would create an unsafe environment and is detrimental to our neighborhood, and our concern is safety in the traffic issues. Our legacies, my husband's and I's legacy, is to pass down our home to my child and for her family to live with the beauty of the nature behind her. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Citizen Speak?
Not too good in front of televisions.
Neither am I.
My name is Billy Walsh, I live on Lodge Street 35 years. And I have five, five girls, and I've got 11 grandchildren, and all the 11 grandchildren, they all come over at different times, right? Thank God, right? And...
I know what you're...
My wife just passed away. Anyways, see, I cry about that. Anyways, we had a little meeting the other day with, with the fellow that was trying to put this church together, nice guy, nice enough guy. But we had a meeting the other day, he was going to get the feel how we feel about it, and he, and he, and he knows how we feel about it, and he's still going to go along with it. All these people that came to this meeting, impromptu meeting, you know, and, and I don't understand why he's, he's still sticking to this, building a synagogue behind my house. Plus, there's a road, there's an empty lot he owns, they're going to build a road there with a sidewalk, and when I'm sitting down at my house, at night, the lights will be coming right in, right in my house. And people will be beeping, and the kids have to watch where they, where they go at night, you know, even the kids 12 or 13 years old, right? And these people come to the synagogue for their services and all that stuff, you know? But anyways, I'm against, I'm against this, and, and I want everyone to know I'm against this. Marvin, I'm against this, you're still a good guy, but I'm just against it, okay? See you.
Thank you, Billy. Anyone else for Citizen Speak?
My name is James O'Donoghue, I live at 11 Lodge Street in Milton. Can I stand?
You can stand.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon says he's got, he's got priorities in this project, first, charity for the synagogue, and then the neighborhood. His comments, not mine. But the last time I looked, we all subscribe to the same God, and charity begins at home. So, we're all these neighbors, we should begin with ours first. Does that make sense? So, everybody, people have said everything they have to say, I can't add to it, but the synagogue's got to respect our wishes. They have a lot there, big enough, it's six acres, they want to jam the synagogue up against Lodge Street, because they want to keep the other five acres for other uses. That's fair, that's his property, do what he wants. But they could put that synagogue down on Gun Hill where the people have agreed, they have no problem with the synagogue, instead of jamming it up in Lodge Street and go out through Gun Hill. Furthermore, if he wants to develop the rest of the lot for housing, we have no problem with him coming out on Lodge Street for, for residential use. Even though it's not wide enough, we would say, go ahead, build your synagogue, but have the entrance on Gun Hill, but then do your couple of houses in the future and use Lodge Street as an entrance. And that's a perfectly acceptable use to the neighborhood. But the way he's handling it now, he wants to jam it on us, make us his enemies, which we don't want to be, because it's a perfectly suitable use for that, we welcome a synagogue. But right now, he's making 50 people here, that once that synagogue opens, they will have no time for them. They'll be angry every time a car comes in and there's traffic and someone gets hurt or there's a fire. or there's a fire, they're gonna be angry with the people from the synagogue. You don't want enemies in the neighborhood, we all want to be friends. So, if they jam it down our throats, we're gonna hit these people for a long, long time. We won't get over it, we're gonna be very angry people. Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen speak?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the people who are representing the opposition on Lodge Street, there are folks that are in the hallway, if they could just come in so the board can see how many people have come, there's not enough room in here. If they could see how many of us come in so that the board can see how many of us are here.
Hi, my name's Haley Dutton. We moved to Lodge Street fourteen years ago, like most people on the street, for the nature and the great neighbors and everything. And when I moved to the street, there was a couple kids, a little bit older than me, so didn't really have too many people to hang out with on the street. And now, walking out of my house and seeing, you know, Lulu and Bridgette and all the kids out there, just playing on their front lawn and already enough the traffic, they just go fly down the street or there'll be a line backed up and, you know, I already see my dad go out there and try to wave them down or go down or people putting up the Slow Joes and everything and I just would, the traffic is just so crazy and if there's another way to get in there, the Gun Hill entrance, it just would make life so much easier, you know? I would hate to see these kids have to not move to the backyard but not be able to be out on their street and make Lodge Street the street it is, you know? I just would hate to see that and it's just, the street can't handle it like everyone has said and I just, the kids, I just love seeing them out there playing and everything and it just would, I would hate to see them not be able to do that anymore in the street and everything, the traffic, so, thank you.
I'll make it short and sweet.
Just a couple, yeah.
Because everybody said what they needed to say. It makes no sense.
Can you just identify yourself?
It makes no sense.
Can you say your name and address?
Scotty Dutton, I live on Lodge Street, forty Lodge, yeah. It just doesn't make any sense coming out onto Lodge. Gun Hill, it's gonna cost a little bit more money for them to do what they have to do for the excavating, but hey, you gotta do what you gotta do. But it makes no sense. And everybody else said what they needed to say and that's it, that's all I have to say, you know? Common sense is common sense and this makes no common sense coming out here. So, that's what I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen speak? That's it. Oh, we have one more.
My name is Karen Stone, I live at thirty-six Lodge Street with my husband Chris and our three children. My children are the fifth generation of my family to live in Milton. We chose to live in Milton by our home on Lodge Street because of the sense of community in the town and the close-knit neighborhood. Over the time we've lived here, we've seen a dramatic increase in cut-through traffic in our area. This has been of great concern to our neighborhood and we've been working on the town over this problem. It is unfortunate, the Temple Beth Shalom has been searching for so many years to find an appropriate site for their synagogue and I admire the generosity of the Gordons to donate their land after so many deals have fell through for the temple. However, this good deed by the Gordons will have a terrible impact on our neighborhood's existing traffic issues. As people have said, we have over twenty children under the age of ten living here. From construction to use, the temple will only compound an already dangerous condition on our street. We cannot handle any additional traffic burden to this small, narrow street that is so densely populated with small children. Thank you.
Last call, anyone for citizen speak?
The panel, may I, I'd like to just utter one more thing here with you. Vincent Stancato again. I sat with Mr. and Mrs. Gordon for about an hour the other night as we talked about some of the complexities of the issue. One of the issues that we talked about was the size of the projected temple and the parking facilities, which Mr. Gordon informed me was somewhere between an acre and acre and a half, somewhere between forty-four thousand square feet and sixty-four thousand square feet. We all have water problems on Lodge Street. When we get a five, six, eight-inch rain, everybody's basement gets a little bit of water. Mr. Gordon agreed, his does as well. Adding that temple on top of the edge of our properties with sixty thousand square feet of land that now is no longer absorbing water and adding that water to the borders of our properties is going to increase the water issues that we have on the street. And I believe Mr. Gordon reiterated that, you know, the complexities of the drainage are gonna be looked at and worked out. The last thing I wanted to say is Lodge Street is one of the most beautiful streets on the planet, okay? It just is. I've watched a generation of children be raised there and currently watching a second generation of children be raised there and I just don't want to see something happen. Salt of the earth, Lodge Street, that's what it is.
Okay, last person. Good evening.
My name is Jonathan Bowden. I live at seventy-six Lodge Street, which is at the corner of Lodge and Pleasant. I live there with my wife and we have three children, including an eleven-year-old daughter and a seventy-five-pound collie. I'm not gonna repeat what my neighbors have said, but in addition to children, we're fortunate to have a lot of dogs on our street, which also creates a safety issue. Just very briefly, I'm concerned, as my neighbors are, about having the entrance to the temple in the middle of a residential street. You've heard about the current traffic issues with regards to St. Elizabeth and also late in the afternoon. I can tell you, since our house is right at the corner, every day I can see cars whipping down as they cut down Lodge Street in order to avoid the traffic light at the corner of Pleasant and Randolph Ave. You've heard about the significant flooding issues that occur right down at Maitland and Lodge, which is right in front of where the Gordons' property is, and the risk of street parking. I would just ask the selectmen to really consider having somebody independently evaluate the impact of what's proposed. The Gordons were good enough the other night, as you've heard, to come and talk with us and I think they're very well-intended in terms of what they want to do and take into consideration our concerns. But to me, to independently evaluate what the impact would be on such a small residential street, I think would be the responsible thing to do and I would ask you to consider that.
Okay, it is, usually the board of selectmen will not comment on citizen speak, but what I'd like to do now is bring up Mr. Gordon and move on to number five on the agenda. And if, Deborah, are you gonna come up as well?
I'm going to also ask the president of the Milton Temple, who you all know as because that's a long-term town meeting member, and Ada Rosemeyer, who's representative of the building committee, but the, and I don't have to tell you.
Deborah Felton.
And, so, but let me just start off, because I've listened to all of this and I've listened to most of these concerns on Tuesday night when there were...
Marvin, not to, I don't mean to cut you off, but just for the public, would you mind just introducing everybody?
Pardon?
Just for the public, would you introduce everybody at the table?
Okay, I think I...
All right, if you do it again, since everybody is sitting now.
Ada Rosemeyer, who's the representative of the Milton Temple Building Committee. Roni Voig, who's the president of the temple. And why don't you introduce yourselves? She's got so many hats, I don't know. She's not really representing the temple, but she's, unless she is, as a member.
Deborah Felton. I'm a past president of the synagogue and, as everybody knows, I work very closely with Marvin at Fuller Village.
Okay.
Okay, and I, so you'll get it on sound, I'm Marvin Gordon, I've been involved in various aspects of town government for forty years or more, been a town meeting member for thirty-five years. And this is, I could spend a lot of your time, which I'm not going to do, going through every one of these points. And one of the reasons that we attended this meeting that was called by the neighborhood on Tuesday night was because I'm very concerned about addressing as many of the neighborhood concerned as we possibly can. But I'll just, just for the record, I asked to come before the board strictly as an informational matter. This is, this board is not sitting in an adjudicary position on this issue at all. It's not something that through the process goes through and unless there's something comes up that I haven't, I am not aware of, would not be something that would be coming to the board, it will be coming to the, no question. Long before we had the idea of a temple placement, there's been, and you've heard this, from all over the town, and I hear it all over the town myself, there's a tremendous amount of issues with the increased traffic burden on our fifty-year-old infrastructure. And cut-through streets, at your instigation, the Traffic Commission's instigation, there are all kinds of restrictions and signs and so forth to try and address this, but they're still public roads. I'll just wind the clock back a little bit as to why I'm here. Well, a lot if you go back to nineteen twenty. If you go back ninety-four years, that's when my grandfather, I'm sure you've all read the Milton Times today, so that's when my grandfather moved onto this property and ran a dairy farm all the way from, used to have a lot of property on Pleasant Street, but as funds got low, lots were sold on Pleasant Street. And there was, and some lots were sold on Gun Hill Street. So, he was there, had a dairy farm there for twenty-nine years. And I was basically born and brought up and was part of the neighborhoods that they're talking about. Only one, as I mentioned to them the other night, just as an aside, I used to spend three or four weeks every winter on Lodge Street when my folks went away for vacation because I lived at twenty-five Lodge Street where my geometry teacher and one of my best friends in Milton High School lived. So, and there were just as many kids on Lodge Street when I was nine and ten years old as there are now. There's nowhere near the amount of traffic. But just for the record, everything I've known from all my exposures at the town Milton is that the traffic burden that would be incremental here is, will be minimal. Absolutely minimal because of the infrequency and the timing of the weekly service and the three high holidays a year. We're still only talking about a very minimal impact. If we were, this was one other way of looking at it from the town government's point of view, as if, look at it as if I didn't own all the land between Lodge Street and Gun Hill Street. Parenthetically, we're the only spot on Gun Hill Street that could possibly work if I were giving land away and that thing, but I don't want to do that. So, that's off the table because the temple is not gonna own any, the temple will not own any land on Gun Hill Street based on my present plans. And I'm donating this land, which is, I think, Mr. Clark correctly, because he's seen some of the things that I was thinking of, will vary between, from a minimum of one and a half acres to one-point-eight acres. For a building that would, if I had my way, and I'll tell you why I might have my way, will have a footprint that might be of five thousand to fifty-five hundred square feet on, multiply it out, one-point-eight times forty-four thousand six hundred feet, it's a very small footprint. My objective in trying to have this as a dialogue with the neighbors is what I'm most concerned with. I'm gonna let them give you a little history of the temple's search for land because that's been a huge frustration for one-hundred-and-twenty-five families in Milton for three years, which you see next door, at the congregational church, on a regular basis. But they, go back, this saga started five or six years ago on their search for a home because when they, formative stages, they were seeking a zoning change for the building on Blue Hill Avenue. All of you who are at this table were involved in that multi-night event at the Milton Town Meeting. And I, they didn't get it and in my opinion, as you, all you have to do is look at the voting record for that town meeting, I don't think it was the right place and the right zoning plan because it was gonna add a lot of commercial activity on way-too-small a property. And the voting record will show that Andrea and I, who are the donors of this property, voted against that zoning change. And I don't have any guilty conscience of that at all, but I've watched for three years while they've been trying to find an alternative place to put their, and they've been, one or two, basically, I think only one really, would have been probably a better place for them, but it was, either the economics wouldn't work because it was way-too-expensive or there were other neighborhood or parking concerns, for instance, that overrode it. So, they ran up against a stone wall and then given my family's history in this town, and they won't say it, but I might as well say it. I have been one of their, my family's been members of this temple for all these years. On the other hand, we've certainly not been activists in this temple and I've been extremely inactive. It's my family's, it's my family's tradition and the going back ninety-three years that leads me to this and what I think would be best for, not only for the temple, but for the town and the community. The objective, and you see here, which may not be the property that I'm saying, because if you take that line which, that's facing, what is that, north-south? South on the, yeah, to the right is basically east, to the left is west and the top would be north and so forth. If you look at that property, the southeast line doesn't follow along the stone walls that have been there since a hundred years, a hundred and fifty years ago when this was part of the Voc Farm, and we might, I might, when this family comes down, want it to change a little bit, which actually add a little property to the, through the temple. That's the only line that could possibly change. What this doesn't show is that the west, northwest border, which is... What this doesn't show is that the, the west, northwest border, which is, which is Professor, Randolph Avenue northwest, that, that line to the, to the east of that and, and a big, a big area on the south edge is a conservation easement, which parenthetically, this was referred to by the all-time Miltoners as the Hannan property because Judge Hannan owned this for many, many years. But when we, my mother owned it for a few years after Judge Hannan passed away, she bought it. And before, we sold it, also considering the neighborhood, considering everybody on Randolph Avenue and so forth, when we sold it, we established to the Milton Land Trust a big conservation easement along all the back of the Lotte Street. And you might, if I might, I might show you, you might show roughly where that conservation line is.
It actually goes, it runs along here and along here.
The second purpose of that conservation line was to, to close off enough frontage on Randolph Avenue so another house couldn't be built to keep the density down. But, so that's conservation land, which takes up, I don't know how many square feet, but it takes up some of that. But if, this property, if you looked at the aerial of it, is heavily wooded with oak trees that can be a hundred and twenty feet high. My objective and, and they'll tell, they're gonna give you the history of this, but my objective, and, you know, they can't look a gift to us in the mouth. So I am going to, if they want to get this property, which they really do want to have it, then I, I'm going to have deed restrictions or other conservation restrictions and so forth because my objective is to build this, and as close as it has to go to my house, it's all right because I don't think it's gonna be, personally, I don't think it's gonna be an impairment of my enjoyment of, of my house or anything. But the, the, you can point out where my house is, but.
Right there.
Putting it in that northwest corner of my total property has a lot of community advantages. It won't be visible there from any street. It will not be visible from any street by putting it up there. What I tried to get out to the neighborhood the other night was that I'd love to communicate with them because I'm willing to, I want to be able to arrange what we can do for screening, for a wide set, under the zoning code, we have to have certain side lot restrictions. I would like to expand on those. One waiver that I might ask the planning board, which it will be, it isn't really a judicatory, but it's, they need site plan review of it, is to make sure that we've, we're not violating any of the zoning bylaws, which are height, side lot, and so forth. But the only waiver I can think of is that my objective is to keep absolutely as much green space as possible. I want green space out of, and if they want to build a temple there, they're gonna have to agree that this is green space. And we do not go back to the temple zoning issue at the town meeting. One thing that will be a, is a zoning restriction, which, which I mentioned to the neighborhood in southwest, but it was not a significant factor apparently. But one thing that I, that I think should be a significant factor is that we will not, in the deed, that they cannot sublet any part of this property. It cannot be sublet. Any educational effort there would be only for their, for their religious school that they use themselves, but it cannot be put to any commercial use by subletting it. So those are the things, and that's, all of this is in consideration of what I think will be, in the long run, best for the, for the, for the, for the neighborhood. The, I will want to work with them going forward to see everything we can do to ameliorate on the screening issue, the minimum amount of vegetation and, and especially big trees that have to be taken down and so forth. But if this becomes adversarial, then it's just gonna be a negotiation between me and the, the temple. I want the neighborhood to be part of this, this, absolutely want them to be part of this negotiation, but, but as you heard me say, off the, it's off the table that this, that there's anything other than this property that's in the center of this that you see is, is what we're donating. I'm not donating the rest of it. There's a piece of my property, I'll, I'll be before you or the, or the Milton Land Trust, there's a piece of my property that will probably be a half acre or so that's along the, the stream that goes from, under Randolph Avenue, goes along the back of where Tom Corcoran's building houses now, and under Gun Hill Street and out ends up in Paradise Park. I'm gonna, the, my intention is to put, to either give the town its conservation land or put a conservation restriction to, to the Milton Land Trust or to the town. That's, that's the other thing, but, but we have never had any intention, all these years, about, we built our house forty-nine years ago. But you see here, all these years, I had, if the, the, I, the, could have maximized the value and the, and the profitability of this property by building a road from Lotte Street to Gun Hill Street. No intention whatsoever to do that, whether we, how we preserve, because my objective, thinking of the, the town's needs, is to keep absolutely as much of this as open space as I possibly could, and I wouldn't have any, any motivation to do anything but keeping it all as open space except that they're, they were up against a stone wall. So I'll turn it over now to Roni to just to tell you what they've been doing for, for, or whichever one of you wants to handle this, what they've been doing for three years and why my heart went out to them.
Excuse me, could I just ask one question of Marvin before? You know, one of the things that was, one of the concerns that was voiced by the Lotte Street residents was, was the construction vehicles.
Yeah, I'm sort of hard to get together, Tom.
I'm sorry. What, what, one of the concerns that was addressed by the residents was construction vehicles moving over this road from Lotte Street. And there was only one that, that.
I could, see, I told, I mean, I'll answer any questions you have. I said, as I started off by saying, I could go through, if I've been keeping notes, I could have gone through every one of the traffic concerns.
I understand.
Because I've been where you are, I've been, you know, and have to, and, and I know a lot of things of the, of the Traffic Commission's, and they've been fighting, they haven't been fighting, they've been, they've been grappling with this problem for a long time because Gun, Lotte Street has become.
A cut-through.
From, from somewhat of a cut-through street. I think if you put counters on there, and maybe you'll ask the police to do it, if you put counters on it, you'll see that Gun Hill Street is more of a cut, on the total days volume, it's mu, it's become more of a gun, a cut-through street than Lotte Street. Especially in the morning hours, I take my life in my hands when I go to put the trash barrel out because they're coming down that street at fifty miles an hour. Four, that's, I heard somebody say there was one house impact that would be impacted. There's a lot more than one houses. There's the house that, that Tim Fallon was brought up in, that has two hu, that has two little children in it, that's almost opposite where, where the only logical space would be to put an entry on this hut, and this house right next to it, which was in the backyard of what used to be Pat Desmond's grandparents', where there are two young children. So there's four little kids right in that area and, and as I said, it's off, the, if, if the entry were coming from that side, this, I'm just showing you what my thinking is of why this is, besides the fact that it's an ideal secluded, non-intrusive spot, the, anything from Gun Hill Street to be economically feasible at all, I'd have to just take this piece of property that you're looking at off the map and, and, and put it, a piece of prop, to, and it's still not be as economic, put the piece of property in back of the houses on Pleasant Street would be much more severe impact on the Pleasant Street people. They don't have the screening and it's, and it would be closer and I, and.
Are you talking about the parcel on the right?
The, if you're looking.
Yes.
If you look, I think, I don't know whether it's still there, but it was, but my grandfather's house that he built in thirty-seven after his nineteen-twenty house burned down was where, even, it may still be, but it was where Tom Fenneren's wife was brought up. And the next one over is John, two ones over, that does, two houses over is John Carroll's son-in-law, which was, had been my grandfather's barn fifty, eighty years ago. And the other, I think that, I'm trying to remember the name of the, it doesn't show the swimming pool now, but if you go, go to the left, if you can put the pointer to the left, the next one over, right in there, there's a swimming pool in there now and that, and they have young children in that house, there's young children in the house on the corner, there was, should have been an historical house, it was built in seventeen oh nine, it was the original Vosfim house. So there's a lot of kids in Pleasant Street, as, as, as you know, it's a really high-volume thoroughfare. So I don't like, just thinking as I would be thinking of it as if I were in a decision-making position, is a much less, that location is a much less attractive thing for the town's benefit and for the, for the people it's impacting. There's no question, and the traffic impact, the Traffic Commission really has to come to grips with a huge amount of cut-through traffic that goes through Lotte Street, not as much as Gun Hill Street, in my opinion, you can count it. But the trap, cut, they should be doing something about it. And the other side of that coin is the other reason why, you can say, I'm not listening, I've listened and I've reject, and I have, and I don't agree with them. We can talk about it further, but the other reason I don't agree with them is that if you quantify what impact the temple would have on this, on this total amount of traffic that goes through Lotte Street, it will be absolutely minimal.
I guess my question though, Marvin, is in terms of the construction vehicles, would it be possible to bring down?
I'm glad to ask that because that's one thing that I thought about when I heard it the other night. They have not heard me say this, but I'll put it right on the record, the construction vehicles, when this is under construction, they can come up my driveway and go into that lot, not over.
So you've not used that, okay.
Not over Lotte Street.
Okay.
I will give them whatever legally is required, a temporary easement or so forth.
Marvin, let me ask.
Eighteen-wheelers have gone up my driveway many times.
Okay.
So, so, and without putting the lights and Mr. Walsh's things or cutting down his fence.
Marvin, just one other thing I just want to get on, and it has really nothing to do with this, but.
Construction vehicles can come in that way. It's not gonna be great for the Gun Hill Street neighbors, but it's, from a road point of view, coming up my driveway is certainly a lot simpler.
Marvin, can I ask you a question? Where would the road come out onto Lotte Street? It looks like, I think I know where it is, but it looks like there's a house there.
Right there.
Okay, but there's not a house on that?
No, it isn't.
It's right at the end, like if you continued Maitland across, that's where it would be. Oh, and you heard somebody say there's thirty-seven feet, it's, it's a fifty-foot opening, which was, was, was legal. That Lotte Street is a C-zone. Once you get past that property lines that it showed, that line there, it becomes B-zone, which is Gun Hill Street.
So it is fifty feet.
So, but the, it basically would have been a grant because it was accepted as a, as a separate lot in the nineteen twenties or thirties. If we just put one house there, it would have been illegal, it'd be a legal lot even though I've, what's C-zone now, seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five.
Yeah. So, so, but you just saw the planning board approve an eighteen-foot house to, a subdivision, a eighteen-foot road to a subdivision where the women's club is, and we're not asking for that waiver, but that's, if they were trying to increase the buffer zone to the neighbors, that would certainly address that issue.
And, and because it is a road, then you have a subdivision, correct?
The other thing I might ask, I started to say, the other thing that I might ask the planning board, and the only thing I can think of that I'd want a waiver for is to have, because we're only talking about the zoning talks, I think about peak, peak usage, which is only basically three times a year. But I would like to have, because the object from my point of view is to have less paved area, more grass area, less paved area. So I would, if this, it comes down to, to a requirement on the, on the parking spaces, I'd like to have less. And one of those peak times, which are usually in dry periods of the year, let them park on the grass. So at that, I've already talked a lot longer than I thought I was going to, but you asked some questions, this is, this is winding me up on some, on some of the issues.
Ada, do you want to say something?
So I'll ask Ada to just talk about what's happened in the last three years and why, why they, and I was trying to help them and why they, they didn't come to me and ask for it, but I felt so badly that they were running into all these stone walls that I thought I had a solution that made sense for them and made sense for the town, given the whole history of, of their trying to find a farm, a home, so.
Well, I'd, I'd just like to say on behalf of our synagogue community, we want to publicly thank Marvin and Andrea Gordon for their generosity in making this land available for our new home. This, this is, does come at the end of an exhaustive three-year search for suitable property for our new home, and we're thrilled to be able to move to a property that holds such significance in the history of Milton's Jewish community, with the first Jewish family living on this land in the town of Milton. And there are clearly many details that still need to be worked out. We are very hopeful that we can work with the neighbors. We appreciate hearing from them and understand their concerns, and we really share Mr. Gordon's feeling that we hope to be able to work with them in, in making this work for everybody. There's clear excitement in our congregation that we might have finally found a place for our new home after looking for so long. And one note is, you may notice that we have a new name. We're now the congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills, and that comes as a result of a merger that happened recently, earlier this year, with Temple Bebel of Quincy, a small. earlier this year, with Temple Beth El of Quincy, a small congregation in Quincy that we actually were, had our office there for a while last year, and we found that we had a lot in common, and they were coming to the point where they needed to close down their synagogue, and their small number of members that they have remaining will be joining us here in Milton, and they as well will be very happy to know that we have a new home. I don't want to take much, much more of your time, but as I, all I can say is, as you know, there's very little undeveloped land in the town of Milton, and we've looked at just about any piece of land that we could find to try to make, make a home for the temple. We've, we've pursued many, many leads, including a possibility of a partnership with the First Parish Church for shared space that we were under discussions for about eighteen months. There have been a lot of, a lot of leads pursued, but none of them have come to fruition until the Gordons have stepped forward and made this very, very generous offer. So for that, we are deeply appreciative, and we look forward to working with the town and the neighborhood to hopefully bring this to fruition.
Can I just add a few things? I just want to clear up kind of what our numbers are. We have about a hundred and thirty families. Out of that, we have twenty-one children who come to a religious school on Tuesday afternoons and Sunday mornings. Most families, you know, have two children, so, but it is twenty-one children. On Saturday mornings, we have, if we have twenty-five people at our services, that's, we're happy, that's a good amount for us. You know, a lot, a lot of Judaism is celebrated in the home, and so people don't feel like they have to go to synagogue all the time, much to the chagrin of the rabbi, of course. We do have, you know, breakfast every six weeks, we are, we have speakers and we do open it to the community. But on a regular basis, there's three, four people who come to the synagogue on a daily basis to work, our secretaries and the rabbi. And so, and there is limited use, and as Marvin said, it really is going to be a small footprint, so we're not going to accommodate a lot of people. We have, as I said, a hundred and thirty families. And that's with the merger of Temple Beth El in Quincy, they had about twenty-five members, most of them were older, don't even live in Quincy anymore, were just supporting the synagogue, paying their dues out of loyalty. I think there are about eight or ten people who are really participating from that synagogue.
Do you have any proposed drawings for what it may look like, no?
No, not, not yet. I mean, when, when we do, if there are any proposed drawings yet, no. I mean, we're just starting to, we're, we're at the very beginning of the process and working with the Gordons and seeing what they are comfortable with in terms of, you know, building square footage and, you know, we've looked at one-story, one-and-a-half-story, two-story, but as Marvin said, you know, he does, he wants a lot of green space, and so we're working with architects now in creating that. And of course, we'll share that when that comes to fruition.
Would the idea be wood-framed construction, or do you know at this point?
I'm sure, I have asked.
Opposed to steel? Or you don't know?
I have no idea, you know, I have no idea.
Okay.
What I would, oh, go ahead, Renee.
I just want to say that, you know, we strive to fit into the community, and we really are good neighbors. We were really good neighbors for sixty-five years on Blue Hill Avenue, when we had six-hundred families who tooled up Decker Street. There are many neighborhoods in Massachusetts that have small temples in residential areas, and it really works, and I would be very glad to share that with any of the neighbors. Sometimes you can't even see that they're temples, and if you blink, you've passed them. We are good neighbors because we're very low usage, and we're not usually there during rush hour or peak rush hour traffic. We have Friday night services with a small group, we have Saturday morning services with a small group, and usually, two times a year is when we have more of a crowd, and maybe one or two barabat mitzvahs a year. You know, we will be as considerate as we possibly can to make sure that we fit within the community and are an asset to the community.
The, the whole object of this presentation, which took a lot of your time, and I know you've got a lot of, of things that made decisions and recorded those, the whole reason is, ever since I was on, on the, on the first town government study committee back in the nineteen-sixties and so forth, I've always believed that in the public function and in all the public offices I've held, that we, that we, transparency is, is paramount. Whatever we're doing, there's, there's no secret agendas, period, that's my motto. Everything I've ever done has been out there for everybody to see. And we wanted, this was a forum that I thought would, would bring this all out better than anything else that's televised, and, and you was the chief executive officers of the, of the chief elected board, the chief executive officers over there of, of the town should know, so that you're in a position to, to, to answer questions and ask any questions if you want, because you know where you can come. I have no secrets here, I'm telling you just the way it is, and if you, anybody has better ideas, I was listening there, and the traffic commi, you know, the Traffic Commission has weighty issues all over town, you know, to deal with. As your town planner, I heard him say in some public forum once, not too long ago, that our whole infrastructure was, was built for, for what our traffic was seventy years ago. And now, it's very hard to cope with it, and it's not just, Lloyd Street had a, had a, had a lot of things happen like the one way, but when, when that helped and kept it very quiet. Now, all you have to do on any afternoon, and I'm sure most of you have seen it, is go down to St. Elizabeth's or go to the Milton Academy at Center Street, and you'll see that it's a solid line of traffic, and it probably takes ten changes of the lights before somebody, starting at Center Street, can get through St. Elizabeth's. Some people are looking through for cut a minute in the morning, it's the other way. That's when Gun Hill Street is heaviest, zoom, 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 which, you know, for all the years I was growing up, you had, had hardly anybody ever going down Gun Hill Street. Now it's a freeway, and, and I've seen your chief put up radar things on Gun Hill Street because the, I never complained, but, but I know some of the neighbors, maybe the ones who have the, the small kids complain when they make that turn and stop down the street at forty, fifty miles an hour. It's a much narrower street, by the way, than Lloyd Street, and no sidewalk, no sidewalk, narrow street. It's a, it's a horrific, absolutely horrific traffic hazard. What I want to do to keep as much green space as possible and to leave our options open for donating conservation land or for other, you know, or community usage and so forth, I don't, right now, it's not in, under consideration, taking any of that land off of Gun Hill Street, just the lot that you see delineated there. So, that's it.
Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions?
We just got some.
Yes, Katie. Thank you all for coming in, I, I know this has been a, a long session for you, and it's, it's wonderful news that this is such a generous offer, Marvin, that, that you've made and that the temple is, is pursuing. I just wanted to echo something that someone said about the temple being a good neighbor. I, I remember from a few years ago when all the town meeting was going on and the discussions about the, the prior zoning, I heard that from the people who were opposed at the time to the temple zoning, that the temple was a wonderful neighbor over the years, so, and I know all of you, and I know that you're, you're all willing to work with the neighbors, and they've, they've raised some concerns to us tonight. As you said, Marvin, we're not here related to the judicatory board, but, you know, I, I know that you'll all, I know that you listen to their concerns, and if there is, it sounded to me as though one of the big issues was the exit onto Lloyd Street, if there's a possibility of looking into an exit onto Gun Hill Street, I think that might be something to consider a little further, it may or may not work, but that seemed to me to be an issue that was common to a lot of the people that we heard.
The possibility of going toward a different street?
Gun Hill. Oh, and exit out onto a street, if that, I don't, I don't, it's hard to see from here, Gun Hill's not even on.
One point eight acres on anything that you've ever seen in this town is a lot of land for a, for a, and the density is absolutely miniscule for a, for a five-thousand-square-foot building. It's, to, to do anything else, to, to do anything else, it's either going to mean that it has to be moved completely off that northwest corner, which is the ideal, completely sheltered, I don't know, and if I had my, if I had my way as far away from the back of, of the Lloyd Street lots as possible, but to move it off, off Gun Hill Street would necessitate from the economics and everything else, at the minimum, a, putting it as a much more, much more substantial impact on the Pleasant Street houses. And that's another reason, besides the fact, the open space and retainage of the, of the land issue, decision-making issue on the balance of the land, that's, it, it isn't practical.
Okay.
It isn't practical. I want to do everything possible that is practical to satisfy their concerns, and I want to be able to work, you know, if the traffic, Traffic Commission should be, you're in the yard, they should report to you, so you can try to tell, ask them to, to address these neighborhood concerns as best they possibly can. I really, you know, if I were sitting in your position, which I was a hundred years ago, I would, I would be putting the pressure on them to see all the possible remedies that you can do to alleviate their concerns.
Well, we know you'll work with the neighbors, you're all people of goodwill, and the temple certainly has been a good neighbor over the years in its prior neighborhood, so, thank you for sharing the good news with us.
Marvin, I'd just like to add.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that the town of Milton is a better place because of you and Andrea and all, all you've done for the town, and I just want to publicly say that, because you really have been, between Full Village, between your work as selectmen and all the things you've done, and Andrea's done on, on various boards and committees, you know, you've been a huge help to this town. And I feel confident that you will work with the neighbors, and, and please keep this as open as possible. Like you've said, we really don't have an awful lot of control, we're not here as, as an adjudicatory board on this issue. There, there is the Dover Amendment, you have a right under the zoning to, to build what you're building, and we just, you know, in, in this, in the sense of just trying to keep everybody informed and do what you can do, I, I feel that you will do that, because I, I know who you are.
Absolutely. And any concerns that you with selectmen or the town planners and so forth have, that you think that we've neglected, well, do everything that's possible. That's why we haven't reached a purchase and sale yet, because I want to have every restriction or, 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 or technicality that, that, that I can still influence and put into black and white with the temple before they own the, own the property. I trust them implicitly, but I want to be in a, in a sort of moderating position, both as the donor and as somebody who's, has a lot of experience trying to look after the towns, what I think is the, the greatest interest for the, for the whole town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to.
Excuse me, thank you all for listening.
You're welcome.
You're very welcome.
Number six on the agenda is, we've postponed it till the, till the next night.
October seventeenth meeting, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And number seven is the.
Is number two here again?
Come back and you'll find out.
Hello.
Is the Dunkin' Donuts request to extend the hours of operation.
That's us.
Hello.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rosanna Francis, and I'm here on behalf of Milton LLC, the owner of the.
If you just like to wait till they kind of.
Sure. No, that's okay, that's fine, no, we understand.
Go ahead, that's better.
Okay.
Roseanne.
Start again. Rosanna Francis, on behalf of Milton LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts on 545 Adams Street, and here with me is Vipin Kara with Dunk, with Milton LLC as well, he's our operations person, and I'm the real estate manager. So essentially, we are here tonight to modify our current CV license. I did bring four copies, so that, I wasn't sure whether you'd have them.
We have a copy.
Okay. So the only thing that we really want to modify here is the first provision, which deals with the hours of operation. Currently, our hours, as stated in the CV license, is, they are 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We actually currently operate 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, although our license says we can operate until 11:00.
Uh huh.
We just find that there's not enough business to justify staying open from 10:00 to 11:00. What we're looking for is to open at 4:00 AM rather than 5:00.
But deliveries would still be.
Everything stays the same, everything on this stays the same. The impact really is employees would be showing up at 4:00 instead of 5:00. And the reason why you might say, "Well, why, who comes to Dunkin' Donuts at 4:00 in the morning?" It actually is an operational value to have people there before 5:00 o'clock, which starts our peak morning hour, because people can set up and get ready and just be ready to go between that 5:00 to 6:00 AM hour, which is peak. So it's an operational efficiency.
How many people do you think, on average, do most Dunkin' Donuts open at, at 4:00 or?
Most of them do, yeah.
And how many people on average would, would you get between 4:00 and 5:00?
Customers.
Yeah, customers.
Not, not that many, maybe twenty to twenty-five customers, but it does help build the 5:00 to 6:00 hour.
Yeah, okay. I think the key point is that, that the public wants to know, especially some neighbors that voice opposition to this, is that trucks showing up will not show up earlier than what they're showing up now.
Same time.
That's guaranteed.
Guaranteed, yes.
Yes, and so here we have, one of the provisions here speaks to the daily deliveries of donuts not occurring before 4:00, and that would continue.
Okay.
So we would open at 4:00, but the deliveries would still happen at 4:00.
Now, there's.
So we wouldn't be earlier.
There, there was another complaint from, there's only two residential abutters, really, and everybody else is too much commercial, and, and it was a lot of noise from, when the deliveries are made, from a squeaky door of some kind, or a metal door.
It's the metal door in the back of the truck that opens up.
Oh, is that what, was it the truck they were talking about?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can do anything about that.
Okay. We can look into that, yeah, we're not aware of it, but we can look into it.
Have you talked with the abutters? We, we did receive letters from the two residential abutters.
No, we, no, we didn't.
I've spoken to some abutters, Katie, and.
Have you spoken with the, the two who sent the letters?
Not the two that send the letters, but there's a couple of friends of mine that own houses just down the street, and they're, they're okay with it.
I did speak with one person who lives in the area, is not a direct abutter, who also was not objecting. The letters that we have are from residents that.
Directly behind.
They were in front, yeah.
Yeah.
On the other side, I think it's the other side of Adams Street, but the concerns, I mean, really.
Or Adams Street, yeah.
Noise.
I think the concern was the delivery trucks just showing up at 4:20.
Yes.
Now, if it's, if they've always shown up at 4:20 and.
And that wouldn't change.
That will not change, I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's the letter from the Browns, that the concern was that the trucks might start arriving at 3:00.
And that's absolutely no, it's 4:00 o'clock, we, we'll, everything else on this CV remains as-is.
What they're saying is, when people get out of the local restaurants over there at midnight.
Oh.
They're going to sleep at midnight, and then they're waking up at 4:00 o'clock from your trucks. They don't want to go to sleep at midnight and wake up at 3:00 o'clock.
Oh, sure, no, I understand, I wouldn't either, I understand.
Yeah, you know, other than that, I, I have no objection.
I don't have an objection to, again, as long as the deliver. I don't have an objection to, again, as long as the delivery trucks don't show up before 4:00. 4:30 is it or 4:00?
4:00.
Not 4:00.
Yeah, this, the, it remains intact, the daily deliveries of donuts can, is done through the front entrance of the building, but not before 4:00 AM.
I think your delivery trucks are showing up late because the neighbors are complaining about 4:30, not 4:00.
I'm sorry.
Your delivery trucks are showing up at 4:25 and 4:30.
So, and you, and you would continue to close still at 10:00?
Right.
Right, right now, right. Although it says 11:00 here, we close at 10:00.
Okay.
And you're expecting about 20 to 25 customers from 4:00 to 5:00 AM. Is it mainly a drive-through? Is it-
There's no drive-through, so it's just-
But I, I didn't mean drive-through, I mean, is it mainly cut-through traffic coming through town or, you know, coming up the expressway that's pulling off?
I think it's mostly through town. You know, and people have been asking us over the years, how come you guys don't open at 4:00? I would love to come here early in the morning, grab my coffee before I go to Boston. So I think it's mostly people from town. There's not too much traffic on the interstate at that time.
I know they are your competitors, but what time does Starbucks open?
I don't know.
That's a good answer.
So it doesn't sound-
Can they open Amory?
Do not know. It doesn't sound as though, the two complaints are noise related mainly related to deliveries. And their concern was that it would be, that that might happen earlier, which is not going to be the case. This is really just people driving into the parking lot.
Same as they do today, except an hour earlier.
Which is behind the building and, and coming in. Probably, probably in some cases through the rear doors rather than the front door, which seems to be what these neighbors are concerned about.
Is there anything you can do for idling trucks, trucks that show up?
We can speak to the company, I mean, we can speak to, we can escalate it.
Because that's one of the, the complaints here, about they pull up at 4:00. They're idling till about 4:25 and-
Maybe, yeah, we can look into it. We can ask them to maybe shut off the engine.
They could shut it off.
Be sensitive to it. That should probably take-
Well, that is one of the requirements of the, the, the VC, the CVL, or whatever you want to call it. Is it all trucks, refrigeration units must be turned off during deliveries? Is one of the requirements.
And so we, we will look into that and make sure that is happening.
Yeah, that might actually improve their, not only not make it worse by opening, but improve the current situation if they're able to stop the idling.
Because we weren't aware of that. We hadn't received any complaints, so.
Yeah.
But we'll address it, we'll address it tomorrow.
I think if you address those couple of things, no earlier than 4:00 for trucks showing up.
Yeah. And no idling?
No idling. And I think you're good.
Okay.
Okay.
The neighbors will be happy.
Yes, no problem.
All right, great. On that, I will make a motion to amend the common vehicle license issued to Dunkin' Donuts in 2006 by extending its hours of operations by one hour from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
And I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next on the agenda is the discussion on the school department, water issue. I'd like to welcome up Lynda Lee Sheridan and-
Hello.
Mike.
Mike, how are you?
How's everybody doing?
Hello.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thanks for having us.
You're welcome. Just your name and what you do for the, for the public.
It's I'm Lynda Lee Sheridan. I'm chair of the school committee. I live on Clifton Road, precinct nine.
I'm Mike Zulis. I'm a member of the school committee and I live at 69 Fairbanks Road.
And you're here because we have an issue with the, the water bill that you received, which I believe began about two years ago?
Yeah, the, the bill is, and I'll just start and we just kind of, I'll kind of lay out in general what we, how we view this and Lynda Lee will fill in with some of the specifics. This is the bill in question and it's a bill dated September of this year and it relates to the period May 9th, 2011.
And this is for the high school water bill?
Correct, correct, correct. And it relates from, to the period from May 9th, 2011 through June 27th, 2013. And it is for, quote, "makeup consumption defective meter." So it's a makeup for, for prior bills that were received and paid. So, just generally, we don't see this as a request for an abatement. We don't see this as a, a case of non-payment because that's clearly not what it is. We see this as a, a case of mistaken water bills over the last two years and a question of where the burden for those water bills should now lie, or for the makeup of those mistaken water bills should now lie.
So if I could stop you for a second?
Yeah, please.
So this was in 2011, right?
Yep.
So you're saying that, and Joe Lynch is here as well, that the first bill that you got that was out of sync with the rest of the bills, that you got before that, you're saying that the bills you got before that were not correct and the one that you got in 2011 was to make up for the ones that weren't correct before?
No, I'm sorry, that wasn't clear. The, the bills from May 9th, 2011, according to the water department, the bills from May 9th, 2011 through spring of this year were not correct because of a defective meter. That's what the water department tells us. And this is-
And that, that's when the meter broke was sometime in May of 2011.
That's what they tell us. That's right.
So really, we're, we've been very good citizens. We've been very good customers. We've paid our bills every month, every quarter. When they've come in, we've paid exactly what's been asked of us forever, the school department has. And we didn't know about this, this bill. But, and we understand that, you know, that's the process that you go through when this became evident and that we need to now look at ways to try and, and fund this lost revenue. But I, I want to propose that because the way the DPW pays the MWRA bills, I believe it's in a year in arrears, right? So the bill from the first year has already been paid. That water bill has been paid. And the money that was paid, that's due for the second year will be due at the end of this fiscal year. So that, that first water bill has already been paid. I don't know whether it's through a revolving account or what your setup is for the financial piece of it. So it's that second year that, that's really under discussion. And so we would, we come here to you tonight. You're the, officially the Water and Sewer Commission that anyone, any citizen would come to, right? And in the town that had a question. And to make the request that we are here in the spirit of compromise to see if, you know, we could pay, work out a compromise with the two of you, with, between the two groups and see if we can come to some agreement. Maybe a reduced rate, maybe half, maybe the second year payment.
Can I ask you, what is the, what's the amount in question here?
The total is $46,000.
Forty-six grand.
I mean, it's money that we don't have in our budget. You know, we didn't budget for this amount of money. And we probably budgeted, and I, this came to me tonight while we were waiting to come on, but I don't know what we budgeted for this year, but it was probably based on prior years when we set up this year's budget. So we're probably going to owe more this year than we had budgeted way back when we made this, this, this year's budget. So we're just trying to, you know, be respectful of the fact that money is owed and, but at the same time say that, you know, for us to pay $46,000, and it has to be paid this year, our understanding is, it has to be paid this year or it would have to go to free cash to be paid. It would have to go before town meeting. Is that correct?
And we're not really sure the procedure, whether it would be an unpaid bill and, and then have to come from a different funding source to carry it over to the following year.
Well, I'm wondering how, Tom, how did it work out when the parks and cemetery owed money?
Yeah, we're not sure. Well, I mean, well, they weren't abated, we know that.
They weren't abated, right?
They, they paid them over time. They paid them over fiscal years.
Payment plan?
Yes.
Do you know how many years?
I know Joe Lynch would have that information.
Joe, do you want to come up here for a minute? Hey, Mr. Chair, if we could just have Joe kind of go over the scenario of what happened with this meter and the timeline, just so we'll, we'll have an understanding.
Joe Lynch, director of DPW.
Sure, thank you. Actually, first question asked before I came up, I can answer the first question regarding the other departments and then get into what happened with this meter. That's what you prefer. Is that okay? What I thought I heard from back of the room was there were other departments, specifically the library, the cemetery, and the park department, who for various different reasons, not defective equipment, for various different reasons found it necessary, found that they accumulated a large balance and needed time to pay them off. It was a bill issued in, in a year. It's a balance that's there and they have been paying them on a time basis. Park department is in the third year of a repayment plan and they're continuing on the repayment plan and probably will do so for several more years to come. Cemetery and, and library, on the other hand, were on a payment plan initially, but at one point in time, the cemetery determined they must have had some money, they decided to simply pay it off and they did that. So their time payment plan was very short-lived. And similarly, in the library, when the director left for a different community, he wanted to make sure the, the affairs were clear before he left and he got the library trustees to pay that balance off. So that one was short-lived as well. So being said, the remaining department is the park department who remains on a time payment plan for three separate accounts. Mary See Lane Field, which is between Churchill's and Randolph Avenue, Kelly Field on Brook, and then the athletic fields at, at the high school campus on Guy Road. It's those three separate accounts where they had to amass large balances and, and finally got some appropriations to allow them to stop paying that off and they've been doing that for several years. Accounting-wise, how do they do that, carrying it year to year? I don't know. It, where it's a utility, I do understand that that's a distinction. And where it's simply a current balance that keeps getting reissued every single quarter, that balance just simply is a diminishing balance. It's not like it's one bill that is there. It shows up in each subsequent bill and maybe, maybe that's how it's happening. I, I don't know. So that's what's happened with those other departments.
Joe, just before you go on, what was, you said that they were different facts. It wasn't defective equipment. For the other departments, what was the problem there, just briefly or generally?
Sure. Simply put, when the library opened up in the brand new facility and had a beautiful irrigation system around the beautiful gardens, it was sticker shock. They had no idea it would cost so much to irrigate their grounds and just found themselves short and unable to pay the bill that they had, they had used. So it was working perfectly fine. They just didn't have enough money and went into the next budget cycle, next fiscal year, knowing that it's going to cost them more and they readjusted their budget. But they still had to make up that, that one year deficiency.
And the parks and the cemetery?
That was, the library was the easy one. The cemetery is probably just as easy. There was, subsequently, it's been torn down, but there was a residential house on the cemetery grounds up by Paradise Road.
Yeah.
And it had been vacant for years. There was a freeze-up inside the building and when it froze up and it thawed out, the water ran and inadvertently ran through the meter and with nobody there and went undetected for a long time until by the time we went up and did our next reading, we discovered, wow, you know, for a vacant building, that's a lot of water. And they said the same thing, wow. So that was, that was just a neglect of a vacant building and those things do happen. So that was, that was their issue. In the cemetery, expect that. In the, in the park department, it was strictly, as they've rebuilt fields and rehabilitated fields and sometimes they've added irrigation to those fields to get them established. They just used an awful lot of water without understanding, truthfully, I believe, without understanding the value of that water. And at the end of one cycle, found themselves similar to the library. Holy cow, this is just an enormous number. They've since adjusted their budget moving forward and are looking for some time to, to recoup or to capture, capture up for the payments on those water used in the past. So those are very different than what happened at the high school. What did happen at the high school is, is, without getting too technical, which I know I'm inclined to do from time to time, when you have a, a facility that uses consistently the same amount of water, meaning it gets a large volume all the time, put it, just simply put a big meter in. Or if you have a house that uses the same amount of water all the time, you put a smaller meter in. If you have an institution like the high school where you get a large influx in the morning, a large influx at lunchtime and a large influx at dismissal, and then in off-peak hours, you get just a minimal use, you do what's called a compound meter. Without getting too technical, again, the slow, the low flows flow through the smaller pipe, smaller part of the meter and accurately read those because there's an inherent accuracy of too much water through a small hole and too little water through a big hole. So it diverts that water, called compound, and it accurately measures the low demand and high demand at those two different levels. There's a device in that meter that senses those flows. And because of some plumbing irregularities in the high school, that device gets hung up and it doesn't, to the point that it damages the meter. It pivots high and low flow and it locks in a position and sends all the water through that large orifice. So in the periods of low demand all overnight or in the summertime, it's not even registering, it's just blowing right by. That's what happened there. So what complicates us a little bit is that it's a municipality as opposed to a private customer. But customers are customers when you get right down to it. Large meters, meters greater than one inch in diameter are owned by the customer at their cost with an obligation to maintain them. It's a little archaic in our regulations, but it's a leap of faith. So the, the deal is, is when it doesn't work, we simply reach out to the customer and say, you need to fix your meter. But we can afford to do it. But you have to, but we can't. So then the stalemate kicks in. What is more unique with the, with the high school is, is we knew of the defective reading in May of 11, 2011, FY 11. And I can't tell you emphatically or definitively when anybody at the school department officially knew about it. I think there's some, some suggestions that they might have known it early on. They might have known it shortly thereafter. But I, but I think that somewhere halfway between the 11 date and, and when they actually formally got it brought to their attention this past spring, somewhere between those two is, is something that's worth talking about, which I think is what, what I hear might just suggest might happen. So short of pointing fingers back and forth at departments, who knew what when, it could be simply as the structure of, we have in fact paid for the water to the MWRA from FY 12, which is part of that reading, but we haven't paid for it in any of 13 and onward, which is really something that we are going to see in our revenue side as a deficit. Now that's something the US commissioners want to consider. That's something you could consider. I think the, the methodology is appropriate. I think the understanding of what the meter did is, is appropriate. More importantly, is the, is the meter has been replaced. The new meter has been replaced. It was done so with June 27th of this year.
At the, the school paid for it?
That's right.
They did. They did.
So in terms of, for the most part, people having these compound meters are going to be institutional or, or businesses as opposed to residential, I assume that-
That they exist-
A resident, resident typically wouldn't have a compound meter. Typically?
Are you single-family residents?
Yeah.
No, they would not.
Right, okay. So-
Multi-family residents would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Multifamily being like a six, six-unit or apartment building, two families probably wouldn't.
Probably would not.
I guess the bottom line here, Tommy, is the water was used. We paid for it and now we're looking to get reimbursed. And they'd like for us to, what would you like for us to do?
Well, I, I think, you know, just to elaborate on what Joe said, we had a chance to talk about it before. I mean, we came here to try to work together and try to come up with a fair and equitable solution. And I think, I think Joe would agree that a fair and equitable solution here would be that we take the burden, the school department take the burden for FY 12 and the, the water department, since the bill, the water's already been paid for, take the burden for FY 11. Essentially, we split the difference. I think it's fair to say, based on what Joe said and what he told us before, that this circumstance is quite unique, very distinguishable from the other departments in town because that, those weren't situations where the departments paid the bill. They received the bill, they paid the bill, and then two years later, the department said, well, now I actually have to pay additional amounts. So I think they're quite distinguishable. And I think this situation, and again, based on our discussions early, it really screams out for a fair and equitable resolution between the two departments. And I, and I think Joe would, would agree that that wouldn't be an unfair and inequitable solution for us to take the, the burden for half of it, FY 12, and the, the water department to, to take the burden for FY 11.
I, I only half finished my, my question for myself. I, I think I was in the middle of- I think, I was in the middle of, largeness, it's generally going to be institutional use, and if I heard you right, Joe, that the burden is on the, well, first of all, the owner of the meter is the institution, not the town.
That's correct.
And, and the burden of maintenance of that meter is on the institutional use of the owner of the meter, not the town?
The burden is, and our regulations does allow the town to flex its muscles somewhat, because if we suspect the meter is, is not performing properly, we can go so far as to order the meter's removal and send it out for testing and install a new meter and charge those customers. Our regulations-
Under our regulations, is the responsibility of the owner of that meter to test it from time to time?
It, it would, it's the right of the town to obligate the meter to be tested from time to time, and it's the owner's obligation to pay for it.
Okay.
So we can flex our muscles and do that.
Okay. How, short of the, the town or the, you know, the DPW realizing that the water usage looked off, how would the user or the owner or the institution know that the meter might be faulty?
One is they could be, if they're tracking their own accounts, they'd see that the consumption is lower than it used to be.
Right.
From a dollars and cents perspective, they would see that their bill amount was less, but um-
That'd be pretty much the only way.
You'd have to be watching it.
Yeah.
My wife pays the bills, I really don't know, so I wouldn't know it, but my wife would know emphatically what the difference in the utility was.
But, and I know Bill does now, you know, regularly looks at utility consumption, all utility consumption, because he can spill off, like that, the amount of savings over the past X number of, so was that a procedure that had been done years back also?
So I can speak to that, because I've been on the facilities subcommittee of the school committee for eight years, and we talk regularly about our electrical and our gas. We don't talk about water. We never have. At one point, we were talking about a faulty meter and it was not water, it was, there was a gas, a faulty gas meter after the construction. But I actually brought this to the facilities subcommittee, we had a meeting on Monday, and I, and I asked them, does anyone have any recollection? I look back in old minutes of our meetings, there's nothing in there about, about water. And, you know, maybe shame on us, but, you know, it's just not what we looked at. We looked at the bills that we could try and, and track and see if there were ways to find cost savings under Bill's leadership and our, you know, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Okay. Which is, I mean, I guess more of a devil advocate, but you know, I do a lot of work in housing and public housing, and there's huge amounts of money to be saved by controlling water. That it clearly is a utility that can save, you can save a lot of money on, so to not be tracking it seems kind of odd.
Well, we put those things into the schools when we built the new schools, they all have, you know, the toilets that flush and the water that-
Low flows.
So we put in all those, all those pieces-
Pieces, yeah.
-to make it as efficient as possible, so.
But then not track the savings. It just seems kind of odd, that's all. But, I mean, I don't, I don't know where to go from here, to be perfectly honest.
I'm wondering if, you know, if there's a big spike in water in a billing period, it shows up on your computer, Joe, correct?
Correct.
And then you notify the consumer. But if there's a decrease, if there's a huge decrease, there's, there's no red flag.
We don't have a low limit alarm, and I know what you're asking.
Yeah.
We have a household who routinely gets, let's call it 6,000 cubic, that's too big, 3,500 cubic feet, and then in one particular quarter, suddenly it spikes to 6,000. We take the courtesy of sending them a letter before the bill saying, on your most recent reading, we have noticed, we encourage you to check out your plumbing, maybe hire a plumber to see if you might have a leak inside, because it looks like you might. The opposite would be true in the instance of the high school. If you're used to getting a reading that's way up here and suddenly there's a low limit alarm, we should have our accounting system, outside billing system, establish that low limit alarm to which we can, particularly on the large meters, send a similar notice out saying, it looks as though your meter is defective, time to get it tested. You know, we can implement, we can, in fact, we will implement such, such a warning system.
There is such a warning system.
We, no, there isn't. We will implement-
I've never seen it, yeah.
Yeah, we will implement, because I think it's an easy enough thing, it's just a matter of putting a-
Flag on that.
Putting, exactly, a limit, an upper and lower limit and have them flag it out to us. The, I had another train of thought that I, that's escaped me just for a second here, and that was on a similar policy matter moving forward, is I think it's human nature, I'm not proud of it, but it is human nature that we extend some professional courtesies to colleagues and coworkers in other departments, and we don't do that necessarily to our, to our regular customers, you know, we send them the harsh note, the letter, you must, you must. Where with our own colleagues, we say, we need you to work, well, that's, we'll give you a little time. I think we need to, and we will, issue the note and extend the courtesy at the same time to bring it down and give them as much support and assistance as we can, but have the record in place so situations like this can't fester for a year and a half or two years in the future, that we bring it to their attention officially. And I think it's a shortcoming of the way we do do business, and I think it became clear in this, that, you know, word of mouth didn't work.
Right. If it was in writing, at least you could say, we notified somebody in 2011. But as you say, the professional courtesy could cost the town of Milton some money now, or the taxpayer, so.
Well, it sounds like this situation is distinguishable from the parks, the cemetery, and the library on the facts that you've told us, Joe. And it sounds like we probably have fault or blame, whatever the right word is, on both sides, or on multiple sides, because it might have been, the billing is not through the central business office, not through the DPW, and, but I, but I would suggest that we take it under advisement. I'd like to ask a few more questions, maybe if individual employees get a little more information, and I don't, I'm not prepared to vote on it tonight on the request.
I think that's a good idea.
I understand the equitable argument that Mike and Lynda Lee have made. We're concerned about precedent.
I would go one step further, but I agree with you. I would like to just see if we could just turn it over to Ann Marie to just investigate, you know, talk to the parties involved, and then come back to us with a recommendation.
That sounds fine to me.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Lynda Lee.
Nice to see you.
Good job. We're all set.
We're all set. You can go home.
Thank you. Invite the entire board and general public to take a trip through East Moon Square and see the beautiful landscape I saw today.
I heard, yeah.
Oh, Joe, maybe you could just mention that briefly, like, a little more, want to give any more detail, it was just done today.
Yeah, they just finished the landscaping today. Beautiful selection of plants and trees and shrubs and some perennial plants that are a little close to the ground, and we did some seasonal annual flowers that are just going to last this fall, and we did some perennials.
Great.
Thank you.
It actually looks like it was intended, so I'm very pleased to report that.
Great, thank you.
Say apologies for the land that I have took.
You've had enough on your plate.
Yeah, we thank the Copeland Foundation for their generous donation, again, for the trees.
Thank you, Joe.
Good night.
Okay. All right, we're going to skip on to number 10. We're going to go to number 10, Ned, which is you, and Mr. Moxley. And this is the Knights of Columbus property redevelopment. This is the property on Nine Thatcher Street, which is at the corner of Brook-
Laurel Road.
Thatcher, Brook, that's Laurel.
Brook, Thatcher, and Laurel, right next to Milton Mart, Food Mart.
So, thank you for the invitation to join you. My name's Ned Corcoran, I am an attorney here in Milton, and I am representing Michael Moxley, who has purchased the Knights of Columbus property in question and has a redevelopment plan that will require some variances from the Board of Appeals, site plan approval from the planning board, but we think it's important, before we begin the formal filing, to reach out to abutters, other boards, to discuss what's being proposed, receive commentary, and adjust plans accordingly. So in that regard, we hosted a meeting at the library for abutters, legal abutters of the property. We sent notices to all within 300 feet of the property. There were probably 25 people who joined us. We have met with the Milton Historical Commission, because both buildings, there are two buildings on the lot, both predate 1919, which make them subject to the potential demolition delay ordinance, and we have, and we're meeting here, and we, as I said, we've met with abutters. So I've got a handful of slides on a slideshow depicting existing conditions and preliminary set of proposed renderings, and then I'll walk through a little bit the site plan itself. So this is the property, as you face, from Thatcher Street, looking in the parking lot with the, with an old single-family house on the left, on the front left of the property, and the Knights of Columbus building at the rear of the parking lot. The Milton Food Mart is just off the right-hand side of that photograph. Next is the front view of the, the old single-family itself, it's not in very good condition. We don't think that it has historic merit, but we're going through that process with the, with the historical commission. This is a second view of that from the parking lot. Next would be closer of the front door of the Knights Building. The Knights Building, interestingly, is structurally extremely sound. It has interior steel support members that carve out a series of bays, if you will, going front to back. Those are original with the building, which would be interesting, particularly given the timeframe of construction, and they make the building itself easily capable of being redeveloped because the structure is so sound. This looks down sort of the left-hand side from the back-left corner of the parking lot, and then there's a series of photographs taken from the rear of the lot, looking back at, that's the Knights Building itself. The next one looks back towards both the Knights Building and the single-family residence, and another one of the Knights Building, maybe one more.
Yeah.
A close-up of the rear of the Knights Building. It's really a property that's been left to go for a while. This is a rendering of the proposal, looking at the building, the proposed rebuilding of the Knight, of the Knights Building itself from Laurel Road, looking sort of from the east back towards that easterly look. The, the plan is to create six three-bedroom condominium units, market rate units, for sale in the existing building. It would require an eight-foot extension of the building at each end, so it'd be an eight foot towards the left and an eight foot towards the right. There are three stories. The building currently is 31 feet in height. We would add about four feet to get to 35 feet, which is the maximum allowed under zoning, but we need a variance to allow three stories. The, what's inside the roof is a, is a third story, it's a master, each has a master bedroom suite, and five of them, the five to the left, have a deck that sort of is, that is above the facade, above the second floor, and then the sixth one, which is on the Thatcher Street end of the building, does not have a deck, it has a deck at the ground level. And then the next would be the facade, looking at, this is an earlier rendering, looking at the Thatcher Street elevation of the building. What's interesting is when we met Monday evening with the historical commission, a couple of the members had some very interesting ideas about how to adjust that appearance. They thought, because it's the, it's really the front door of the building, although it's set substantially back from, from-
The street.
The street, that it ought to look like a front door. So the architect's working on some adjustments to give it more of a front door presence, so that the front door of this building will actually be on this end, rather than as all the others are on the side. And we thought that that was really an interesting idea. So that's that. I've got two site plans over here. These were just difficult, when I put them on the PowerPoint, they haven't translated very well and they're difficult to see, and I thought since the room was small enough, it might actually work, and I know that Mike went and picked them up on the television. The first is sort of an existing conditions. So the property is a long, fairly narrow rectangular piece of property. It does not front on Laurel Road. There's a small house and a separate lot between the Knights and Laurel Road, owned by this lot. So, start that again. The, the lot, this is an existing conditions plan, is sort of a long rectangular built lot that has frontage on Thatcher Street, although with the recent work done by the town to extend out the sidewalks, there's a long curve opening that goes to the property across the sidewalk. There's a, the frontage on Laurel Road is actually owned by people who live here, they own both of these lots. There was some effort to try and acquire at least this, perhaps both, but that's been unsuccessful. Would have made sort of access and egress a little easier, because if we could have come in here and exited out to Laurel Road, it would have made, made things a little bit easier from a traffic perspective, but we don't, we're not able to gain this access. So current conditions, there are three or four parking spaces in front of the, of the existing Knights Building, and a series of parking spaces along the Food Mart building, and there's a dumpster back in here. This is the single-family home. The plan, over to this side, the plan, and this is an earlier iteration, is to demolish the single-family, extend the building, as I said, by eight feet on each side, and then this shows 13 parking spaces and a dumpster pad. When we met neighbors, the primary concern that we heard was the issue of whether or not there was enough parking and can we accommodate parking for six two-family, three-family units here, and also continue to accommodate parking for the, for the Food Mart. And so we've adjusted plans, and we're looking at a couple of iterations with a row of parking that would come along here. I think we've got six spaces now along here. The dumpster is gone, we've talked to the Food Mart owner, he's going to remove the dumpster and move it to another location, probably scale down. The dumpster is probably not necessary for his business if he uses more recent recycling and trash handling practices, but the dumpster will go. These two parking spaces that we're showing here will go, also with the recommendation, one of the people in the historical commission was to advance the green space toward Thatcher Street. And so this will become more of a green area here, the side, the front door here, there's a deck proposed here, and there's a deck proposed here. We think it's important to have some common areas and green area, particularly because this applies to a couple of residences here. The budding properties, there's four unit condominiums, building in the west, on Google Avenue, there's another two family here, and then, and the two, two families, and then Parkway Methodist Church. Parkway Methodist Church is through the rear in the west, and then there are multiple, multifamilies here, and single, smaller single families, Laurel Road, Thatcher Street, Brook. So we're playing with parking spaces here. We're now proposing 16 spaces on the site, rather than 13, which will provide two-plus spaces per each of the units. We're also accounting for some of these spaces for daytime use for customers of the Food Mart.
As a courtesy?
As a courtesy. So that there will be 12 dedicated to the building owners, four- So that there will be twelve dedicated to the building owners, four that would be shared daytime use by customers of the, of the, my mic blocking me.
You got it, Matt?
That's better. Thank you. Four that would be shared by the users, customers of the Food Mart, and then in the evenings would be used by visitors of the unit owners. And separately, looking at where to site these spaces. The idea being that if we move them further back, careful not to approach to here, that we can create some better green space here and a better presentation to Brook Road and Thatcher Street. Now, this is really one of the gateway locations to Milton, if you think about it, because come right in over the bridge from Brulee Avenue, and as you make that left onto Brook, this is an important piece. Substantially hidden, obviously, now by Food Mart and the service station, but may lead to some further opportunity for development there. We need a series of variances. We need, the, the lot itself is currently non-conforming. This is a residency zone. This is obviously a non-conforming use in zoning, but each predate zoning. Zoning allows a single-family residence on a lot like this. With special permits, you can get two units. So we need six. That requires variance from the use provisions. The frontage, minimum frontage in a residency is seventy-five feet. This has sixty-five feet of frontage. That's in existing conditions, but part of the process would need to secure that variance. Side yard setback is ten feet. Survey indicates that this is really about three and a half feet from the lot line, so there's a variance requirement. Thirty feet is the setback from the rear. This would come to twenty, approximately twenty feet. The deck, if it's counted, would come to about thirteen and a half feet. My discussions with Joe Prondak would indicate that if it's a deck, would require variance, that the variance would be from this point and not the corner of the building. If this becomes a patio, something that's built into the ground, then the variance is here. In either case, we need a variance from the setback in the rear. We need a variance for height, because we're going to three stories. Two and a half stories and thirty-five feet is what's allowed. In the zoning, we're going to be thirty-five feet, but we're going to go to three full stories. So that's the, that's the series of variances. They all relate to what we think is a beneficial reuse, which now, and I saw, in the town. Either all of the variances are reasonable, or certainly none of the variances are reasonable because the reuse of that building would require variances in any event, or special permits in any event. So we think it's something that's, at the end of the day, is going to be something that's going to be nice for the area. Our, our early calculations are that it will produce forty-five to fifty thousand dollars in net new tax revenue to the town. Right now, this is a, an institutional use. It's not taxed. And so we think that the, the tax value to the town would be somewhere in the forty-five to fifty thousand dollar range.
Actually, that, that's a really nice change, isn't it? To go from non-conforming to, or non-paying to paying, usually the other way around.
And, you know, there's some, I suppose there's some concern, some new children in the schools. We think that more than offsets with the costs of any, the reasonable cost of whatever number of students it might be in the school. So it's net positive. At the end of the day, obviously, what's that net, really? But it's, it starts with something like fifty thousand new. Perhaps it's net of twenty-five or thirty, you know, something like that. So that's what we have. We're happy to take some questions. Did I, oh, I forgot sewer. The property currently has its own septic. Last tested, we don't know when, but we're going to eliminate the septic and tie the town sewer, which will be improvement. I'll leave it up for questions.
First question I have. They're going to be six market-rate units. Expected, or selling price of the units?
American four fifty.
Four fifty?
This is Mike Moxley. He's the owner. And, yeah, about four hundred and fifty thousand would be the expected selling.
Okay. I mean, I've seen the plans before you, you brought them here, so all my questions are answered. But a couple of things, it's, really is a gateway to Milton. It's on that side of town. And, you know, you have the Milton Food Mart, and you have the garage next door. Would be really nice to see that those kind of fixed up as well along the way.
Yeah. When I met with Ned, when you showed me the plans, I said, oh, it's my only, only regret is that somehow it couldn't have all been incorporated and become a mixed-use facility out of it.
I love the fact that there's recreational space and a common-play area.
Now, what will happen to that, when you, when you move the parking spaces back, that recreational space will
Takes a little bit of it.
Be diminished?
It'll, it'll be diminished. We'll try to preserve as much of that as we can. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a trade-off, and we're looking at some different, the final locations of where those parking spaces will end up, still a little bit in flux. We're, we're, you know, we're trading off the, the appearance from the street with some green space that's, that makes some sense. There's some really nice, old, big trees on that lot. They're all going to be saved. Mike's going to work around those and infill with other shrubs and plantings. But the notion of doing something that's, that's a reasonable level of green as it, as you enter the site is, is important to some, and we think it's something we can accommodate by moving those parking spaces and still preserve a reasonable amount of land back there for
Not feasible to do parking under? Just cost prohibitive? Head ask.
Maybe on the roof.
Don't give Mr. Moxley a heart attack.
It sounds like the Historical Commission gave you some good ideas.
Yeah.
And I also met with Ned beforehand to go over this, so I, I don't have any questions. It's a big improvement over the, the current state of the property.
Certainly, from what I've seen, a huge improvement.
I mean, one thing I will say, I do know Mr. Moxley personally. He's known for many years, and he's considered one of the better builders in Boston. So if we're going to get a project like this in Milton, I feel real comfortable that it's a guy like Mr. Moxley is building this, because you know it's going to get done and to very, very high standards. You know, he's built a lot of buildings over the years, and, you know, there's no better builder around. I can vouch for that, you know? So I'm really happy that he has this. He came up with a really well-thought-out plan. You know, he, he hired a very good local attorney to incorporate the, the neighborhood into, into meetings, which is very important. I build a lot in Boston, and it's one of the key ingredients to getting good planning is to incorporate the neighborhood into it and the community. They've done that.
And there's general support, Ned, among the neighbors for this.
Well, you know, it shows a lot of good faith, too. He's actually allowing the Food Mart to use four parking spaces, and he doesn't have to. And so there's a lot of cooperation here between the developer and the community, and I think it's a very worthwhile project.
Thank you. I agree.
I agree.
Good luck.
My one request would be, if you feel you could do it, would be a general motion and support. I know that the Board of Appeals, as it takes on variance matters like this, like to know that various boards that have, don't necessarily have direct jurisdiction, but at least have considered it, and may general support, at least conditioned upon, obviously, meeting the specific requirements of the Planning Board and the Historical Commission and others, but appreciate a motion if that would be possible.
And it's probably in support of the concept, because you may change the parking design in, in some of the greener spacing.
Yeah. I, I would make a motion to support the, the concept for the redevelopment of the Knights of Columbus property on Thatcher Street, as presented to us by Ned Clark.
Subject to, should we say, what, what were the words you just used there?
I would say that, you know, subject to the reasonable requirements of other boards that will review and have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Subject to, yeah, that sounds good. Subject to review by the
Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? Some good luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Good luck, Mike. All right, moving back to number nine on the, on the agenda, is the Planning Director, Bill Clark's quarterly report. Good evening.
I'm supposed to give my quarterly report, so I have several pages, some of which you've already heard, so I can skip some of it. Maybe you can catch up. Towne of Milton has very, has very little available land for new development. That being said, functions of planning are to productively manage change, to maintain the character of the town, control taxes and spending, protect the environment, all while productively trying to manage growth and development. The Town Plan is charged with working on the town's future. Land use regulations result in benefits that accumulate over the years. Effective planning on major physical projects should benefit residents for decades by providing environmental protection along with economic development, providing jobs, and balance the tax base. The Town Planner guides the town on long-term projects. There's no typical role for the Town Plan, Town Planner. He has a position that has little day-to-day routine. A portion of that workday inevitably involves one-on-one contact with residents and walk-ins. The Town Planner is project-oriented, future-oriented, and typically involved with long-term, high-cost projects. Personally, I help evaluate the issues impacting infrastructure change in order to achieve responsible and effective decision-making. The Town Planner develops plans and programs for the use of land in town while taking into account environmental zoning and legal issues. The Town Planner works to manage development and must spend extensive time collaborating with others, including politicians, engineers, developers. To fulfill the duties of the Planner, I must often examine land features firsthand, as well as plans, regulations, neighborhood, and the needs of the neighborhoods. That all said, the current planning projects that I'm working on, Master Plan. The Planning Board shows the consulting team put together by Community Circle last week at their meeting. First meeting of the Master Plan Committee and the consultant will be October twenty-seventh, seven o'clock, in the Blue Conference Room. The visioning portion of the Master Plan was completed in time for the May Town Meeting. Anyone who's not reviewed the final documents, I encourage them to visit the town's website, click on the Master Plan link on the right-hand side of the page. Housing Production Plan. Housing Production Plan is currently stalled as the Planning Board reviews the draft submitted to them in June and decides to determine where affordable housing belongs. Skating Rink. I've been working through the current lease issues with, with Curry College's rink management team under the original ward letter granted for a five-year period, and am currently researching the necessary issues for a long-term lease, expected to be up to twenty-five years. Energy Alternatives. I, I would like to find a way to use the existing infrastructure, so I've been looking into all the available options, whether it's where to place more solar, something along that line. Grant Applications, Mass Works. We received a million dollars for the, for connecting Milton Village and Central Ave Business Districts. The project is stalled due to auditing, an audit taking place at the State Agency. Construction was supposed to start July first, but the contract is stuck in the state's red tape, and we've been promised that once we start, we will not have to finish by June thirtieth, as originally planned for next year. Whatever we start now will continue to finish next year. Zoning Changes. I'm currently working with the Building Commissioner and the Planning Board to address updating the town's current zoning. Some you'll see at this May, try again, some you'll see at this October Town Meeting, and some we expect to have ready for the May Town Meeting, such as medical marijuana and bed and breakfast. I'm also currently working with Alan Bishop, our G I S Coordinator, to update the current zoning map. A new map was last done in nineteen ninety-six. The new plan should be ready for this May Town Meeting approval. East Milton. The design engineering contract between Mass Highway and Howardstein Hudson is in the Contract Office at Department of Transportation. The town completed all of its necessary forms and requests back in May. Howardstein Hudson finished theirs in early June. After talking with the contractor last week, Howardstein Hudson still feels they can meet the completion date of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, for final design and construction drawings, even though we still don't have a contract. But that's Mass Highway's issue. It's not our fault.
So Mass Highway's will let, will, will do the, the RFP and
They do the whole thing from this point on. The only thing that we will be doing is, we will have input at the twenty-five and seventy-five percent level, and we expect late December for the twenty-five percent and
We, meaning the town and, and the citizens, or?
Yes.
Yes.
We, the town. RFPs completed in the last quarter. The rink management for years four and five of the five-year award, real estate appraisals for Deer Run Cemetery and Zero Central Ave, the sale of Zero Central Ave, and the Master Plan Consultant. The Granite Ed Park and Ride redevelopment opportunity. The Selectment appointed a committee that's been meeting monthly. The committee reviews many possibilities for redevelopment of the state-owned land by the expressway. Meeting minutes will be posted on the town's website very soon. They have minutes for every single meeting. Senator Joyce actually put together a meeting recently for a site visit for the folks from Mass Development, the State Agency that can, that can bring technical assistance to the committee and to the town for furthering the potential redevelopment. The Women's Club. It's currently before the Planning Board as a four-house subdivision, and depending on where the stormwater peer review goes next week, I expect a decision from the Planning Board at the October ninth meeting for the Planning Board. You just heard about the Knights, the Knights of Columbus. You just heard about the temple, the new animal shelter. The proposed new animal shelter would be on land off the town's access road, the old landfill road. Currently, we've had one public meeting held at the Council on Aging back on August fifteenth. We have a second meeting that is due very soon, and we just have to post when. Try to get it before the end of the month. Milton Hill Apartments. The project's underway to create a total of thirty new apartments in front of the existing Milton Hill House. Plan calls for a new building with twenty-seven units, a remodeled Mrs. Henry House with two units, and a new carriage house behind the yellow house with one unit over three garage spaces, carriage house effect. Seventeen Canton Ave, the old The Wolf Building. The rebuilt structure owned by the Shaka Law Group has been completely, it's been completely rebuilt. It's a commercial building, has a temporary occupancy permit, so they're in there, doing their, their work now, as the contractors finish their punch list. The Planning Board went through site plan approval with the Planning Board, and there are a few minor details with that, but it's a long process. It's a nice growth piece. Six eighty-three, six eighty-five Rush Hill Road, five-house subdivision. Demolition is due to start tomorrow morning. Site plan work is due to take place next week. All the permits are in hand at this point. There's some minor land court issues before the, the owner can sell the individual lots.
What's the name of that estate again?
Boyle.
The Boyle Estate, yeah.
Now it's called Barna, Barna Estates. That's Jerry Rankin's company. The Seasons Hospice Facility across from St. Elizabeth's. Construction's due to start early next spring. The Assisted Living Facility at the Horse Farm on Randolph Ave. Some personal issues with the owner of holding up the transfer of property. Actually, Attorney Clarkman and I have been working with the developers. He is the developer's lawyer. The two of us have been working with the owner's lawyer and the owner trying to get the thing forward. I, I know that people have asked me, you know, why is the town holding it up? The town's not holding this one up at all. There's nothing to do with the town.
Just personal issues.
This is just personal issues. The New Legion Post. I actually helped the proponents through the permitting phases and helped address some of the conservation issues dealing with the drainage. Actually came out costing less because of that assistance. We have some pending projects that are on my to-do list. They're just not quite ready for primetime. Milton Falls. I've had discussion with the owner's representative, arranged a site walk for the Selectment and the Planning Board. Discussion the planning board, discussed potential development with other developers and the MBTA officials that have to deal with the right-of-way issues.
And that's the proposed development off of Truman Parkway?
Yes.
Milton Falls.
Whether that be the land transfer as was proposed to the Selectmen, or whether we go back to the original proposal, there's a few...
Original proposal still a possibility?
There's a few people kicking in around.
Okay. What about DCR? Have you talked with them about whether they have any interest in this swap idea?
They do not like the idea of the swap. At this point, they're not interested in giving out Parkway frontage. They're waiting to hear the rest of the story. They're not inclined to do anything. Transfer to take a piece of land that they don't have money for now doesn't help them at all. I mean, to give them a rough-graded park doesn't help them because they don't have the money to create the park afterwards. There'll be more about that one soon. Lower Mills, Two Adams Street has some interest, but nothing formal. There's a few others that are kicking other projects around that just aren't ready for publication.
Is that permit still valid?
Yes.
On Two Adams?
It is, not for very much longer, but yes. At this point, it's still there.
And is the liquor license there as well, right?
40B proposals. I try and keep up to date by calling the different engineers and the state agencies on a fairly regular basis. Milton Muse, the letter from Mass Housing Finance is due any day. It was written by staff. It went upstairs, and they have not seen when, so if there is something up there, it just hasn't come out.
The letter of the site plan review?
The site approval letter.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or denial.
Or denial. Do you have any...
We don't know yet.
You had any communication with them as to, anything beyond what you've just said?
No. I can take and push it, but I really wasn't trying to make it come out any faster. I know that it's there. I know that the staff has written it. I know what the staff has in it, but I don't know what's happening upstairs. 40B, Meg Lane. The Holland brothers have 72 units of rental off of Randolph Ave beside the DPW yard. They're pending a completed application to Mass Housing Finance. The engineering's all done. It's with their lawyers right now. They do not have a complete package into Mass Housing Finance at this time. Hamilton Project. The latest proposal will not be to the town until early February due to the one-year cooling-off period required by state law. The owner is at this point still pursuing a 77-unit 40B on 13 acres. He's keeping the two-acre approval-not-requied site for his own future development. Then there's these other committees that I get to deal with. I do sign review before it gets to the Selectmen. There is a sign review committee. We're actually looking for some new members for that sign review committee, and if town meeting approves it, we absolutely, positively have to have several new members. So we have to start pushing that one. Wireless Telecommunication Committee. That's the different cell tower proposals that come to the town, whether it's the DAS polls, whether it's the polls that are at For Franklin, at the hospital, in the different steeples, whatever. That committee has three members. It's the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, and one from the Selectmen. I'm on the LEPC, which is the Local Emergency Planning Committee. I'm on the Traffic Commission. I'm on the Fair Housing Committee.
Has the Regional Committee started meeting yet?
No. It is due. They actually talked about it last week, but I had something else that I couldn't go. I had jury duty. So I missed that one. Then there's some other plans that I work on and trying to keep updated. The pre-disaster mitigation plan. The town's required to keep an updated pre-disaster mitigation plan in order to be eligible for pre-disaster FEMA funds. The last example of when we got those funds was the spring two years ago when we had the heavy flooding down Garden Street, Cunningham Brook. Because we had that plan, we were eligible, and we did receive emergency funds for that, or mitigation funds. Also, Equity House got new sewer pumps because we had that plan in place. They were eligible for those funds. We also have an open space plan that's a year out of date and needs updating, so that's, after all this other stuff gets going, I need to push that one out, too. And that's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah. That's the word. Bill, on the housing production plan, I caught a little bit of the planning board's meeting on TV, and there was some discussion about that. Just could you briefly tell us what the next step is?
They asked for a list of all the town-owned parcels so that they can potentially look at the town-owned parcels that could be used for that purpose. I have that list, and they will have it in their packet for next Thursday night.
But the plan is...
Or Wednesday, I'm sorry.
The plan's still in draft.
The plan is still in draft. It has been...
Can we get a copy of it circulated to us?
Yes. I have it in a Word that shows all the changes that have been made. I have it in a PDF that shows just where we are today.
And then there's a public hearing process to that also. Is that correct?
There is. But I gave it to the planning board, hoping that they would start addressing the draft in the same manner that I had with Karen Saunerberg. They got a little irritated that it was a public meeting, and in that document were the old identified sites from a couple of years ago.
Town-owned sites or all sites?
All sites.
Okay.
And it's just a case of, this is a draft. This is where we started. This is the draft. This is where we're going. If you don't like it, make the changes. Make the statements that these have to come out. We had a little bit of a difference of philosophy in how to get to that next step.
Bill, can you talk just for a minute on the Mass Works grant?
Sure.
And has the state approved it yet? Or have we got the money? Or where are we with Elliott Street?
Their audit is not complete. They understand. I keep calling. John Thompson keeps calling, you know, where is it? What are we doing? We need to move. We lost an entire construction season because of that. The state understands it. They do nothing but apologize and tell us it's coming. It's coming. It didn't go away. It's still coming. Mass Works is still there because when we met on the Granite Ave project, the funding source for a lot of the streetscape work that could be done on Granite Ave was Mass Works, as stated by Mass Development. They'll help us with the grant application for Mass Works.
When you say audit, it's not an audit of our particular Mass Works grant, it's just an audit of...
No, it's an audit of that department. That department and all of the existing contracts that they have out.
So our Mass Works grant isn't in jeopardy?
It is not in jeopardy. It is not being taken away from us. They're not changing it. They just can't give out more till they get the okay from the auditors. And I have no idea why it's taking them this kind of time.
Okay.
Well, thanks, Bill. That was very informative. Seems like you're busy. And so are we, so we'll move on.
Good. Good night.
Thanks, Bill.
Next on the agenda is number 11, boards and committee appointments. Two appointments.
In terms of the Mass Port liaison, I'll make a motion to appoint Christopher Zambudo, 96 Hilltop Street, to serve as the Mass Port liaison through October 2014.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Just that we had some good qualified candidates.
We did.
After a lot of solicitation to try to get people to take this role on, and we still have David Godine serving as our alternate member.
And he's also on the noise committee, or David Godine is also on...
On that working group, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and Christopher has some, is a pilot or at least has some aviation experience or something?
He's a pilot, yes.
He is a pilot? He's also a lawyer?
He's a lawyer, a pilot, and he has extensive IT knowledge, technical expertise.
That's good.
Sounds like a good candidate. And the town administrator mentioned that we should probably think about reconstituting the Airplane Noise Committee at some point to help the new Mass Port liaison with...
Yeah, I think that probably is a good idea.
I would agree with that, yeah.
And the Citizens Advisory Group that's been involved in the appeal and doing all this research and getting a lot of public input will be a resource for him as well.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll move that we appoint Arthur Doyle, 85 Belcher Circle, to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission, to serve through May 2015.
And I'll second that. Another good choice.
Yeah. Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 12, the approval of the capital projects certificates. I don't know if you want to read all that, but...
Is this revised?
Yes, it's...
Okay, good.
What is?
Guess what I'm looking at? Yeah, when I read through this, I noticed that just the useful lives were all over the lot. I mean, we had trucks with five-year useful lives, we had trucks with 15-year useful lives, we had trucks with 10-year useful lives.
Okay, thank you.
So that's been somewhat revised. I guess I'm still a little confused as to why an F-250 pickup truck has a 10-year useful life under one, and a Chevrolet pickup truck, which is less value, has a 15-year useful life. It still doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, who determines these, Tom?
The town...
Yeah, the town can, there are state guidelines that you have to live within, minimum-maximums. And then, basically, it's up to the town to really determine the true useful life. In other words, how long are we going to keep this spit-and-bubble gum running? Because that's what we tend to do. But we can't exceed the state maximum useful life, and it's really for bonding purposes.
That's correct.
How long can bond this particular piece of equipment?
But all we're doing under this article is approving the useful life.
Right. Which will, again, flow through to the bonding life, that particular bond issue. So I'm still a little hesitant on the 10-year stuff, but...
I mean, one of 10 years, Tom, right?
There's three. Three F-250s.
Oh, yeah, in the...
The second vote.
Now, if that is the true useful life, I have no problem with it, but...
I believe the town accountant worked with the town treasurer in consultation with the DPW director.
And these all are DPW vehicles? Most of them are.
I believe, yes. I think that one of the pickup trucks is for the Consolidated Facilities Department.
I guess the second question I would have is, if we vote this tonight in the form that it's in, and can we later revise our vote if it becomes evident that 10 years is not the true useful life of that vehicle? Or if we vote it, is our vote permanent?
I think if you voted tonight, it goes back to Bond Council to be put in the packet to go out for bonding in February.
Right, right, but...
So none of these have been bonded yet?
I'm not sure if we can bring it back on October 17th.
No, most of them, they may have been banned, but not bonded.
No, they have not been bonded.
Tom, is your question...
But they were authorized in 2012.
Would you like to see a longer useful life, is that...
Well, yes.
We banned the 2012s, and then in February, we're going out for bonding for the 12 articles and the 13 articles.
I mean, we're in an extremely low interest rate period, so it's not like, you know, if you bond it for 15 years as opposed to 10 years, you're paying a lot more interest because you're not, really.
But if you're paying 15 years over 10, you are paying more interest.
You're paying more interest, but, you know, given the fact that the interest is 1.5% or 2%, I mean, it's, you know, it's certainly not a ton of money, and it certainly conserves our bonding capacity, you know, in terms of putting other things out there and doing other capital projects. So that's my main concern, is that.
Do you want to extend the life of the repayments?
Yeah, not beyond its useful life. I mean, because you certainly don't want to be paying for something that doesn't exist any longer. So you want to be somewhat realistic, but...
I thought we were just approving the useful life. If this has really got an impact on bonding, then I'll just recuse myself, which means you get to read all the motions, Tom. Sorry.
I mean, it is both. It does impact the bonding.
It does impact. All right, so I'll be recused on this one.
So, again, I mean, I don't mind making the motion, but I would like to know if we could revise it if it is in fact...
Bring it back at the October 17th meeting?
Right.
Well, do you want to hold it off until the 17th?
I...
Maybe we could get the town treasurer to come to the October 17th meeting and...
Yeah, as well as Joe Lynch.
I mean, I wouldn't vote on it if you're not comfortable.
I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay.
So why don't we hold off till the 17th?
Okay. I'm agreeing with that.
It makes sense. Now we can bring Katie back. Okay, in the meantime, we'll move on to number 13. We'll wait for Katie, I guess. She probably took a walk because we were supposed to be about 10 minutes doing this. Anyway, the next one is the approval of the One Day Liquor License for the Friends of This is for a fundraising event. Here she is. We're on number 13, Katie. The approval of the One Day Liquor License for the Friends of Milton Crew. We have a motion.
You ready to read the motion?
No.
Right up. I'll move that we approve the issuance of a One Day Liquor License to Janet Gilmore, Friends of the Milton Crew, for a fundraising event that will take place on October 11th at the First Parish Church from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comments? On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 14, temporary signage request for Fitness Unlimited.
I will make a motion to approve a request from Paul Midori, Fitness Unlimited, to display temporary banners, sale flags at 364 Granite Avenue.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 15, the annual Spring Town Meeting warrant closing.
I'll move that we approve the date of January 6, 2014, is the closing date for acceptance of articles for consideration by the 2014 annual town meeting.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? On favor?
Aye.
Did you have it?
No, go ahead.
No comment, okay. On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
The only thing I did want to add, can we make sure that that notice goes out to all departments?
Yes.
So that they know that the warrant is being closed that day, so we don't have further issues.
Yes, it does. It does go out to everybody. So we will make sure that it does.
Number 16 is a discussion on the FY '15 budget. Did you want to talk on that, Tom? Marie, did you have something?
I think this has been set aside just to, we have to give department heads some kind of an idea. Department heads have to have budgets into us by November 1st, and then we have to get them to the War Committee by December 1st. And...
And they need some direction, specifically the departments that are under the control of the selectmen. You know, do we want to go out with a request that they give us level-dollar budgets? You know, in other words, the same as last year, the same as last year plus pay increases? Level service budgets to provide the same service this year as last year? What direction do we want to go in?
And we talked briefly at the warrant committee a week or two ago for a preliminary budget discussion with them. It was a general discussion. We didn't, I don't think, come to any decision at that meeting, as the school committee was there as a group.
What was the consensus?
There really, it was a discussion, not really a consensus reached, I don't think it's fair to say.
Right. I mean, I think the consensus, well, I think the general thought out there is we've been on level-dollar budgets for so long now that it might be hitting critical mass and that it could be dangerous to continue on that course, that literally we're robbing Peter to pay Paul in some cases, and we're just moving things from the general expense line item up to the salary and wage line item and worrying about it later. I think it's creating additional reserve fund transfers, and it's, you know, in many cases, could be a dangerous precedent in a sense.
Have we really reached that level?
It's so difficult to say. You know, we're not in those departments, running those departments, and we don't know exactly every penny they spend and how they spend it, but...
What budgets were submitted last year? Was it level-dollar?
Level-dollar. We did allow for... We did allow... Did we allow anything for the steps and lanes? I think we did allow those.
The warrant committee gave us that back later, but initially, budgets were submitted, and you had to absorb those steps.
Absorb steps and longevity.
That's right.
So, yeah, it was just the pay increase from the previous year was allowed. So, in other words, if there was an FY13 contract negotiated, then that was allowed to, that salary line item was allowed to increase.
Within the budgets themselves.
Yes, within the budgets themselves, without having to be absorbed. Because we, well, we had the set-asides anyways for those.
That's right. We had the set-asides.
But then it would affect the... You had the set-aside for 13, but then it would affect the 14 budget because now your salaries are increased. So, if you said level-dollar with 13, then there'd be nowhere to pay those pay increases in 14 without taking them out of... So, those were allowed to increase.
That's right.
But nothing else was.
But I guess a question, Tom, and you're the budget guy, and so are you, Katie. Can we afford level service? Are we bringing in enough to pay for level service this year?
Point of fact, probably not. We are currently working on doing some forecasting. There's a committee set up of Anne Marie, Amy, and Glenn on the school, Glenn Pavlichek from the school. I've been kind of sitting in on the meetings, and we all kind of... We're going to do a forecast first, which is basically just saying, projecting out what is likely to occur. We know pretty much what, you know, in terms of revenue growth, in terms of, you know, expense growth, you know, making the best assumptions you can. And you kind of already know what the answer to that is, that it's not going to balance.
Yeah.
That there aren't enough revenues to pay those projected increases in expenses. So, yeah, it goes without saying, you know, if we ask for level service, we probably don't have enough revenue.
Is it a lot of work for department heads to give us a level-service budget and a level-dollar budget? See what the difference is?
I would think that probably makes sense. The level-dollar isn't too difficult because they basically, they basically just keep everything the same and...
Except for wages.
Except for wage increases. And this year, there may not even be any of that because nothing's been negotiated yet.
That's correct.
So, that may be pretty simple to do. Yeah, you know, I think the more interesting thing we'll be seeing the level-service budgets and what the department heads really think they really need. But I guess if we do that, we've got to make them understand it's not a fishing expedition. It's not a wish list. It's what do you realistically need to run this department?
Exactly.
Except that the last page of the budget form does have, in an area where you can indicate if you want to, if there was, if there were money available, what would you add on? Isn't that usually in the, is it still in the budget?
Yeah, that still is in there, which some people do a better job than others have.
Yes.
What you could do is you could request level-dollar budgets, ask department heads to talk about the impact of that level-dollar budget on the amount of services for their department, and then have them do a separate...
Level service.
Narrative on what level service numbers would look like.
With minimal, as you say, minimal expectations.
Yeah, just what, yeah.
What do you absolutely need?
Need to run this department.
Outside of salaries.
Including salaries, I guess. It would have to include both.
Well, the salaries would be included.
Including positions, you know. I mean, it's level-dollar because we, yeah, I mean, there's step increases and there's longevity that you'd have to factor into that. And then make a decision in terms of, you know, do I have enough employees? Can I drop an employee? Can I, you know, or do I have to add one employee? You know, I mean, that should all be made, you know, those decisions should all be made at the department level. Whether they get them or not, if they need one, you know, is another question, but...
Well, since we met with the warrant committee, we've had free cash certified, which is a positive number and better than we thought it would be. And I think we need to revisit our revenue projections. You're probably doing that in connection with the five-year plan, because, for instance, motor vehicle exercise probably was underbudged for revenue last year.
It was.
It seemed to be a more positive, a bigger number in the end, so we need to revisit revenue projections. We need to talk with assessors about overlay release. Ironically enough, our next meeting is on October 17th, which is when we know all the debt ceiling issues in Washington will be coming to a head. So, there's so much uncertainty in the economy right now. I think probably level service and level-dollar budgets at this point are the right things to ask the departments to prepare, and then we can see where things go.
Right. I think without asking for the level service, we just can't tell what the impact is of level-dollar.
Yes.
That's the consensus.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that it's still early to determine where they're ultimately going to wind up.
Number 17 is the approval of the reserve fund transfer request from the selectmen E&amp;R budget.
I'll make a motion to approve, forwarding to the warrant committee, reserve fund transfer request to the selectmen's election registration FY14 budget, the amount of $7,530, to cover unanticipated costs of the August 13, 2013 state primary and the September 10, 2013 state election.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment?
The only further comment I have is the way the reserve fund transfer request was filled out, line three has a present, the present line item balance is zero. How could that be? I mean...
Yeah, that must be a mistake. At this time of the year, it should be the full amount.
Right.
Yes, but it's zero for those two, those two elections. Each election is done on a separate line, so there was no line for those two. I mean, I can put in there what the balance in the budget is if you want, but what it's saying is there's no...
I hear what you're saying.
There's zero in the line item for the...
Because those lines didn't really exist.
They didn't exist.
I think we should just clarify for the warrant committee what the total budget is.
Yeah, because in terms of what town meeting approves, it's all one line. They don't approve, they don't approve funding by election. They approve the line.
Yeah.
We can change that.
But otherwise, I have no problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. I'll make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation, believing that having this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and to return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment. Miss Condon?
First, I'll second it, and then...
Second, yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Kohane, yes. We're in executive session.